Berman?
Here.
Councilmember Burt?
Here.
Councilmember Holman? Councilmember Klein? Vice Mayor Niss? Councilmember Price? Councilmember Scharf?
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Here.
Mayor Shepherd?
Here.
Five present. Council will be going into a closed session conference with attorney, legal counsel, potential litigation relating to the Mitchell Park Library. Closed session. We're going to be starting with special orders of the day and a proclamation for Marion Mandel. I've asked Councilmember Price to read the proclamation if you are ready. And also, we have a short little video about Oaxaca as well, so settle in. Thank you.
City of Palo Alto proclamation, Marion Mandel, neighbors abroad of Palo Alto. Whereas since 1964, the city of Palo Alto and Oaxaca, Mexico, have enjoyed a sister cities relationship, this year being the 50-year milestone. And Marion Mandel, neighbors abroad, vice president of Oaxaca, led the celebrations with a 30-person delegation in June 2014. And whereas Marion Mandel has been the key champion of this sister city relationship, building lasting friendships with Oaxaca for many years, providing diplomatic and cultural enrichments for neighbors abroad and the city of Palo Alto. And whereas Marion Mandel has been the primary organizer of the student exchange program that, for almost 50 years, has developed cultural understanding and built family connections between Palo Alto and Oaxaca each summer for high school students, and is now an intergenerational program with children of past participants joining in this program. And whereas Marion Mandel has led luminous adult tours to Oaxaca, allowing Palo Altons to experience and appreciate the rich artistic life of Oaxaca, and has made improvements to the observatory and a science center for the Oaxacan students. And whereas Marion Mandel has worked tirelessly to benefit Abacure Infantil Josephino, my apologies if it wasn't perfect, a children's home which cares for 55 orphaned, abandoned, and abused children, and the Nino a Nino Child to Child Program, which educates children with techniques to teach each other basic healthcare, nutrition, and environmental awareness, which has reduced childhood deaths from the double digits to 1% to 2%. And whereas Marion Mandel, together with Rotary and Kiwanis Clubs, has organized the donation of eight good condition emergency vehicles from Palo Alto to Oaxaca, where such vehicles are named after Neighbors Abroad members Joe Carlton, Bob Wenslau, Palo Alto Fire Chief Jorge Salazar, and former fire chief Nick Marinaro, and an ambulance named after Marion Mandel. Now, therefore, I, Nancy Shepherd, mayor of the city of Palo Alto, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim our gratitude to Marion Mandel, who has so magnificently served as an ambassador to our sister city of Oaxaca, Mexico, and thank her for the time and effort she has expended to bring our two cities together in mutual appreciation. Presented December 1st, 2014.
And we do have a little video, and then we'll bring Marion up to the podium. This is about our celebration when we went down, and right before I was able to go up and make comments, the translator told me she hoped she could translate, so I tried to pick words that were very simple, but we'll see how this turns out.
I want to thank Mrs. Nancy Shepherd and his committee, and welcome to this house, the city of Oaxaca. Fifty years ago, this partnership between our sisters was born. Some of you weren't born in that time, but we have made a lot of activities together. Muchas gracias por todo lo que han hecho por Oaxaca. Espero que estás en la... Thanks to all the donations and the hard work you have been doing during all these years. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for having us and welcoming us with so much fun and dance. This has just been spectacular for us from Palo Alto. I want to champion our two committees, the one from Palo Alto with Marion and the one from Oaxaca, Soldad. Thank you so much for helping us with the reaffirmation that we did this evening. This is very important to Palo Alto. And as our cities continue to work together, for many of the cultural experiences, not only that have been started over the last 50 years, they've ranged from student exchanges to firefighter exchanges. Fifty years of Oaxaca and Palo Alto is a long time, and we have a lot to celebrate.
Here. So we can recognize her. I don't have any cards on this, but if anybody wants to join her and say any words on her behalf, or if Marion would like to say something, I can certainly say something. I did go on the trip with you back in 2001, got introduced to the deep and rich program that Neighbors Abroad has developed with this particular city. And it's a proud moment for me to have shared the 50-year anniversary and to join you down there on your trip. And for those of you that might not be familiar with Oaxaca, it is where the Americas started, so you can start to see things that you might see in Europe. Churches built in the 16th century, things like that. So it's a deep and rich heritage and a wonderful sister city relationship that Neighbors Abroad and Marion has championed, along with your friends from Neighbors Abroad here tonight. And I see a number of people that were on the trip this last summer. Go ahead.
So while the mayor is coming down to give this to you, Marion, I wanted to say something as well, because I was on that trip, about I had not been to Oaxaca before. And then, Oaxaca, and I think you would all agree to this, Marion is considered something of, I think, of a native. And they have literally adopted her. As they mentioned, an ambulance is na-- a fire truck is named after, literally, the Marion Mandel ambulance, which is very impressive. And every place we went, everyone knew Marion. And how many trips have you made, Marion, to Oaxaca? How many?
Maybe 14.
14.
She thinks this one might be her last.
Yes. So I think more than anything, I know all your Neighbors Abroad friends are here, they were down there with you. You have really made an enormous impact on them. And you put the trip together, you made it run pretty much flawlessly. I mean, there's the occasional glitch, but overall, it was just a wonderful trip. So I think we should all applaud you before Nancy gets to...
Jim's going to take a picture of us, but if you'd like to say anything.
I just want to say thank you to all of you for supporting the program for 50 years. That's a very long time. And on this trip, we were delighted to have so many of our city council people with us, which impressed the Oaxacans greatly to have all of you along. And you certainly made Palo Alto proud by everything you did. They were just so happy, and they still are, and we keep hearing about it. So, you know, 50 more years?
We're going to face Jim right now.
Oh, my face over there.
With your proclamation. And smile. Thank you. And thank you very much for all of your service.
And as the mayor comes back up, I know that everyone from Neighbors Abroad has gone out of their way to be here tonight, and we really appreciate it, and what Neighbors Abroad has done for all the sister cities, including Oaxaca. So thanks again for being here tonight, and congratulations again, Marion. You've done an incredible job.
And with that, we get to go into the rest of our agenda for the evening, which will be agendas, changes, and deletions. And I do have some comments I'd like to make at this time. For those of you on electronic packet, there is no item number 15, so I hope you didn't study it too hard. This is the Intergovernmental Legislative Affairs. This item will be moved to January. I've also asked the clerk to place, to put it places. Do we have the copy for everybody, our agendas for the 8th and the 15th? No. I'm going to go over them, because there is a lot of things to cover by this council. And so the action items for the next two meetings, the 8th and the 15th, the city manager and I have been working closely with trying to take up items that are supposed to have appeared this year, and so let me just walk through them. On December 8th, we are asking to begin the meeting at 5:30 with a study session on sustainability and climate action plan. This will introduce to council the concepts that will be influencing all seven elements of the comprehensive plan update. The city manager expects this to take some time, and there might be public speakers, so we have scheduled this for an hour and a half. The action items that night will be the comprehensive plan update, which was originally introduced on November 3rd, and notice to follow up with follow-up action for November 17th. Since all council members were not present at that meeting, it was postponed and is now scheduled for December 8th. We've also scheduled for an hour and a half on that. Approval of staff recommendations for the compost facility RFPs for yard trimmings and residential food scraps at the Measure E site is also being taken up that evening. This item was requested to return to council prior to year end back in April. We have it scheduled for one and a half hours. And then the adoption of the management compensation plan, that we are going to be going into closed session on tonight. So December 15th will begin at the normal time at 6:00 p.m. Special orders of the day include resolutions for retiring commissioners. The action that evening will be to hear, to renew a hearing on the, a public hearing on the 50-year lease with Avenudis at the city-owned property on Bryant Street. Policy and services recommendation to council for adoption of new smoking restrictions for outdoor areas. The Palo Alto History Museum update, and a colleague's memo from Klein, Scharf, and Berman regarding fuel switching. We have removed the typical city manager's year-end review to the reorganization meeting on January 5th, as we did last year. This is a good night for old and new council members to reflect on the work from 2014 jointly and prepare for the new year. If there are concerns regarding any of these decisions, please give, talk to the city manager, Jim Keen. There are a few items that were expected to be taken up this year, but we were unable to schedule them, one of them being, of course, the Buena Vista Mobile Home Park and 441 Page Mill Road request for density bonus law concessions, which were previously on the tentative agenda. Tonight, we have item number 12, which is scheduled for 45 minutes, which I believe is going to take longer than that. And so we can either have a hard stop and pick it back up and schedule the meeting, schedule a meeting after finance tomorrow, or push through and try to take up all the items this evening so that we can get our work done on the 8th and the 15th. So we can have discussion about this now, but once these items are picked up, you can give me your thinking as to how you want to address them so that we can accomplish our agenda. And so, city manager comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Chief Nicol is not here. I just wanted to advise him to not count on having a fire truck automatically named after him in Oaxaca in the future, so... The, heard from Supervisor Semidion's office, that the public hearing on the Stanford Trail has been moved to December 11th. The county folks had heard from people in our community who were concerned about the hearing date coming so close on the heels of the Thanksgiving holiday, so that county staff has moved the hearing out one week, which should provide a little more time. The new date is 12/11/14, December 11th. The hearing will start at 9:30 a.m. and be held in room 157. Supervisor Niss, I assume that means County Building 157. And folks can go to find out more information by going to the Santa Clara County government website, sccgov.org, and search for this, for more information. Our community services department and public work staff are encouraging public participation in an online survey for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. To date, we've received over 500 responses to the survey, and we hope to have more than 1,000 responses by December 19th, when the survey closes. So the survey can be easily accessed at paloalto.parksplan.org. Additionally, there is a third community workshop scheduled for tomorrow evening, December 2nd, at the Lucy Stern Community Center from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, and anyone interested in sharing their ideas and hopes for improving the Palo Alto Parks and Recreation System is encouraged to attend. And lastly, in mid-January, you can look forward to seeing a comprehensive information report updating council on the progress of this planning effort. The Palo Alto City Library asks, "Are you worried about the overdue notices you have been receiving?" For most of our customers, there is no need to worry, the facts. If you had items due after September 26, 2014, and you return them by January 2, 2015, there will be no fines, no questions asked. And you can return your materials to any of the five Palo Alto libraries. Fine forgiveness is one way the library is working to make it easy while we move from temporary facilities into our permanent new buildings. And unfortunately, the library's computer system is not cooperating completely, so some library users have received notices and error. We look forward to seeing everyone at the library. For the second year in a row, City Palo Alto has been named as a leading digital city in the, in our population category of cities by the Center for Digital Government, which is a national research and advisory institute focused on information technology policies and best practices in state and local government. This year's award was based on the city's adoption of both cloud-first and mobile-first approaches to deploying new technology, their offering of more than 50 online services, including those for the web and smartphones, and serving as a model for open data featuring near-real-time data, and the comprehensive use of social media and online tools to support and promote community and civic engagement, and unique approaches to public-private tech partnerships, including the Palo Alto Apps Challenge and solutions such as Pulse Point and Building Eye, both application, mobile apps that any of our citizens can download for free. The Mitchell Park Teen Center opens its doors on Monday, November 17th, to all Palo Alto middle and high school students. Hours of operation are Monday through Thursday, 3:00 to 6:00 p.m., and Friday from 3:00 to 10:00 p.m. And best of all, it is free, of course. For more information, just go to cityofpaloalto.org/mptc. Celebrate and prepare for the holiday season at Palo Alto Art Center's Free Holiday Family Day this Sunday, December 7th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. Enjoy festive hands-on art-making activities for children ages 5 and up and their families. And Saturday afternoon and evening, approximately 300 people came out for the Fourth Annual Holiday Tree Lighting Event at Litton Plaza, thanks to the Stanford Federal Credit Union, Palo Alto Rec Foundation, Whole Foods, Palo Alto Weekly, and the Downtown Business Association for sponsoring the event. And, there you are, Roger. We hope everyone will join the Mitchell Park Library and Community Center grand opening celebration this Saturday, December 6th. The day begins at 11:00 a.m. with speakers and an official ribbon cutting, and there will be activities for the entire family all day long until, until 4:00 p.m. Just a sampling of the program events include music by the Gunn High School Choir, two teen bands, face painting, Make X, library storytimes, basketball on the new community center court, cooking demonstrations, dance performances, children's theater performances, public art tours, and more. Our entire community is encouraged to bike, walk, or ride share to the event, which promises to be a great celebration for all of the day's detail. You can go to this, our website, cityofpaloalto.org/mymitchell. Since its opening on November 6th, the Mitchell Park Library has been open 21 days to the public. In that time, the library has had 45,336 checkouts, 879 library cards registered, and 19,040 people come through the gates. Here's just a glimpse of what's been happening. Anyway, it's better in real life. Be there this weekend.
Okay, thank you. And now we have oral communication, and this is when members of the public can speak on any item that is not on our agenda tonight. And so, we have three speakers so far, and you will have three minutes. Our first speaker is Samina Fahim, to be followed by Jim Wang. Welcome.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Samina Fahim Sunders, and I am founder of American Muslim Boys Foundation, and I also serve on the Human Relations Commission of Santa Clara County. And I am here to invite all of you to Eid festival. During this holiday season, I just wanted to share how Muslims celebrate their holidays. And you can also see this in Palo Alto Weekly on November 1st, 21st, and there's a wonderful article written about that. So I don't know how many of you know, since 9/11, there is such hatred against Muslims, Arabs, and South Asians. And I have personally felt that, and in great manners, just, you know, effects on my life, my personal life. One choice I had was I could just, you know, get mad, hate them back, but there is no fun in that. So I decided to do just the opposite. I started building a beloved community 11 years ago. And for that, I have opened my home for iftar dinners, Eid dinners, brunches, open houses just to know each other, know your neighbors, peace picnics all over the Bay Area, especially in Palo Alto. So that's why I just thought this would be something wonderful for my Palo Alto city people. And just be there. We are going to apply Hannah, you're going to experience, we will provide clothes for you, for your kids to come dress up, have a photo booth, take a picture, be a Pakistani, a Muslim for an hour or so, and just have fun. And there will be free gifts, free bangles, and experience, lots of experience with education if you like, otherwise, just fun. So I'm going to leave this flyer in the back, on that table, and there is a sign-up sheet because I don't have enough flyers. So if you would like, I can send you a soft copy, and please, send it to the whole world. I have never run out of food, and I would love to have that problem.
Thank you. Jim Wang, to be followed by Stephanie Munoz.
Sorry about that. Waste about 30 seconds. This is my first presentation. I today just want to present some evidence. This is a lot of evidence. I just picked something due to time limitation. And so, second page. This is a pool, the IR, and you can see the window, window height is 5 feet and a half, very clearly. So, and I draw two red line. That's meaning all these windows is alignment. 1, 2, 3, 4. Window is 18, number 18, number 19 is all alignment. That's meaning all the window is the same height, and 2 and 1/2 feet. So then, this is the measurement. It's very interesting measurement. It's the simple dimension, and we got five different result from different people. And the factor is this one, is 3-inch shortage. And this is the three people measured together, myself, and one of the staff and the planning department, then also the architect. So, the next one is the final inspection, the staff measured. It pretty makes sense, because sometimes the tape measure has some tolerance, I can say is accepted. And these three measurement is provided by different people. And one is our staff member, and then two is from the attorney, and of course, someone provided data for them. And the reason they provide this data is very clearly, because the shortage is about 1 inch, so can be classified as the construction tolerance. So this no compliance can be dismissed. So, this is the evidence of the picture, and this is the evidence this staff show her supervisor on the iPhone photo. So then after that, people keep going, argue, argue why the 3-inch shortage. So you can see the last page, the evidence, the answer is very clear, because the people applicant quietly increased the window size. So this is very clearly. So don't need to argue, say, the measurement is from the subfloor, or the tolerance, or something. This is the evidence. So that's all my presentation. I don't want to make a conclusion, so everybody here can figure out why they want to do this way. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker for oral communication is Stephanie Munoz.
Good evening, Mayor Shepherd and council members. This is a very good time to applaud the council's outreach to Oaxaca and to other cultures that are more newly integrated into our community. It expresses the personality of Palo Alto. It's, I think, one of our old legacies or gifts from Stanford. Stanford, from the beginning, has had foreign students. We used to do homestay, English in action, the foreign cooks. But, and many of it, the library, what a great gift to everybody in Palo Alto. And then the things that are maybe only also rans, but you can see the possibility there, the history museum. However, when it comes to spending the budget and on things that we really need, I think that maybe we aren't as careful as we could be. It really does seem to me that if we have somebody, if we have people here who could do 100% good job with something, then it's maybe an expression of the personality that you have to go to a recruitment firm and find somebody that not only can do a very good job, but speaks several languages like a native, and has several advanced degrees, and can do gymnastic, and used to be Miss America, and it's all not necessary. The payment for the recruitment firm is really not necessary. The money, I think, might be better spent on housing the homeless. And we should also appreciate what some of these groups of people are doing for us. For instance, I think I've pointed out to you that those 100 families at Buena Vista are providing $13 million worth of housing. That's what it would take, the very cheapest you could do, if you had the land, to put up housing for 100 little families. And I'd like to mention also, I noticed in the paper, something like 96,000 going for youth services. Well, these people at this Buena Vista are also providing free youth services to keep the children busy and out of trouble. They get these people to volunteer. They call them grandparents, or sometimes aunties and uncles. They're really doing the community a service, and helping to make our town contribute to bringing up the general level of education in the nation. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have minute approvals for October 6th, October 20th, October 27th, and November 3rd. I need a motion and a...
It's been moved?
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Can we vote? And the minutes are approved unanimously. We now have the consent calendar, and I do have 12 speakers on item number 5, and I have two lights from colleagues here. So Councilmember Klein, consent calendar?
I would like to record a no vote on item number 10, and I would like to move that we take off the consent calendar, item number 7.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded to take off item number 7. And that is for the contract for the wireless network plan. City manager? I'm sorry, need three. Thank you for the reminder. And so we do have three with Councilmember Scharf and Councilmember Burt seconding and thirding that motion, and I don't see the city manager. If Jim could come back, we could find out how to take this up, or we will take this up at another time?
Right. I think the city manager needs to do some comforting with staff in terms of the timing of coming back with that item.
Okay. And then, now I have Councilmember Holman.
I'd like to move, well, I'd actually like to hear from the public first, but I will ultimately be moving to take, I don't know, number 5 off consent.
Which one?
5.
5? Do we have, we need to have four people take that off consent. Do we, can we just do a straw poll now? I'll join you two, and Councilmember Burt and Scharf and Schmid and everyone. So I think you've got more than you need. And we have 12 people speaking on this. Okay, Councilmember Burt, I see your light on? Okay. In that case, let's go out to the public. And if you don't need to use your three minutes, this would be a good time not to. We have a long agenda meeting tonight, so...
Is it going to be, should we let them know it'll be heard at another...
Yes. Actually, why don't I go ahead and do that? Since you do have a commitment to pull this item, you don't need to speak to it tonight. You are still free to do that, but it will be heard next year. It will not be taken up tonight. So, in that case, just if you don't want to speak on it, just pass when I call your name. So for item number 5, we have Paul Hef, to be followed by Annette Isaacson.
My understanding is we would bring that back February 9th.
Okay. Well, sometime in 2015, when you agendize. Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you. When I heard about this issue, it made me think of actually a very narrow slice of the whole thing, which is what happens if someone moves into, next to my home, and decides to build a very tall home? I have solar photovoltaic panels on my roof for electricity generation, and if they get shaded, of course, they become worthless, so a long payback period turns into forever. So as you're considering how we can handle very large homes moving into neighborhoods that are not originally built for it, please consider what would happen to solar PVs, because I know we're all trying to improve the climate action plan for Palo Alto, and I think solar PVs are an important part of that. Thank you.
Annette Isaacson, to be followed by Roger Kohler.
Hi. I'm interested in this as a precedent. I also have solar panels on my house, and I don't want them shaded. I really feel like we have to take global warming seriously, and we put the solar panels up in order to try to mitigate that, and so that's really important for me. And also, I think the scale, really, we have to consider what's going to happen to a neighborhood if the scale of the house becomes so big. South Palo Alto used to be moderate income. We had six teachers in my street. There will be no teachers buying a 4,500-square-foot house.
Thank you, Roger Kohler, to be followed by Jean Wong.
Good evening, council members. I'm the architect working with the owner on the project, and we have drawings to show you when we meet again. I just wanted to clarify a couple of things in the paper. This house is in the flood zone, 5 feet, so the finished floor has to be about by my forehead high off the ground. So there's, you're already up 5 feet. Second, if we did a one-story home, we would not have to go through any review, and it could be 17 feet high on top of 5, so we could have 22-foot-high roofs and walls around the entire house. So it's not quite so simple once you put in the flood zone situation. It creates all kinds of problems, and it's not a simple yes or no on the design of the home is really impacted by this flood zone. It's everywhere here in town, with that into town. So that's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Jean Wong, to be followed by David Hamad.
Hi, I'm Jean Wong. I'm the owner of this property. I'm a little bit overwhelmed by how many people are coming to speak again at this property who I do not know. We are a young family. We have a 9-year-old, a 7-year-old, and 4-year-old. We bought this property about over a year ago now, and we're really hoping that we love the neighborhood, it's next to a park, and it's extra school, and we just want to live there and build our house. And we've gone through at least three approvals, maybe more, and we've given everything I can possibly think of: small house, small bathroom, small everything, no windows, no, you know, I don't know about solar panels, because I can't imagine you can block the other neighborhood, because we're so back in a setback. We give away front yard, we give away backyard. We've given, there's nothing more, I mean, we could give up. All we're trying to do is build a house that we're legally allowed to do, to my understanding, and that's all we're trying to do here. So if there's, you know, any way that we can build a house, please, somebody stand here and let me know how that's possible, because I'm really trying to work with the city, and I really believe in this process, and I really hope that end of the day, we can, you know, have a house. Thank you.
Thank you, David Hamad, to be followed by Bob Hindon.
I had a PowerPoint that's up there, and I don't know how to access it with the...
Again, this will be taken up in February, when you will be talking to the new council at the actual appeal time. So this is, we've already pulled it, but we can't discuss it tonight, so...
Okay. So I would just like to say one thing, then. It seems to me that the problem here, and the problem for many neighborhoods in Palo Alto of the similar character, like a circle or a cul-de-sac, is the unintended consequence of having different-sized lots. And, you know, maybe it's way off in the future, and maybe it doesn't affect us, but somehow, the normal area requirement should be modified such that, let's say, on one circle, you can't have any houses that are, you know, more than a certain size based on the average area, or something like that.
Technically, you're only supposed to be speaking to asking us to pull the item tonight. Are we allowed to keep...
I don't know.
You want to?
Don't.
Okay. All right. Okay. The actual appeal will be taken up in February, so, but go ahead.
You would rather I not say anything more?
No, go right ahead and say what you need to.
Okay. So, you know, our basic approach is that, when, in the planning department, they don't really consider the character, basically. And since we're an I-4 neighborhood, and, how do we get to the next one? Okay. So this is the neighborhood. It's, you know, it's three circles. It's original Greer Park, 1950, ancient architects from San Francisco, mid, so-called mid-century modern design. My house, it shows my house and the current house that's there, and this is what's proposed. The lots are similar in size. My lot is somewhat smaller, and the houses are quite divergent. I did a remodeling back in the 60s with a very creative architect named George Cody to maintain the character. And this is what's been done as a suggestion. This is a tear-down and build in the floodplain, same floodplain, the 4'9", but the result is a, you know, relatively modern-looking, simple house that we would like to see this other one look like. So that just shows you how many people are here that want to speak. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Bob Hindon, to be followed by Frank Engel.
Hi, I'm Bob Hindon, and I'll try to be quick, but mostly came here to say that I think that the city and the planning department should be more sensitive to the style of the houses in the neighborhood, you know, building large houses in, you know, neighborhoods like this with Iklers just doesn't fit. And I think there should be more thinking to build houses that actually conform to the neighborhood.
Thank you, Frank Engel, to be followed by Mary Ann Hindon.
I thank the council for removing it from the consent calendar, and I withdraw my request. Thank you.
Mary Ann Hindon, to be followed by John Macken... I'm sorry, you're going to have to pronounce your last name for me.
I want to say my name's Mary Ann Hindon, and I have lived in Palo Alto for 22 years, very happily raising two children with my husband and an Iklar. I feel, I'm a retired California architect, and I feel that Iklar neighborhoods are an important part of the architectural landscape of Palo Alto. They are historically important because they were a way for ordinary people to live in a beautiful, modern, well-designed house. Their aesthetic of blurring the boundary between indoors and outdoors allows people to enjoy nature from inside their houses, and provides a unique sense of place. Allowing houses which are out of scale and a much different architectural style to be built in these neighborhoods destroys their cohesiveness and are jarring notes in an otherwise harmonic whole. And I would also posit that if people love these neighborhoods enough to move into them, but feel that they have to build a significantly different styled house, in my opinion, they're destroying the character of the very neighborhood that they wanted to move into. The other thing I wanted to say is that I'm very disappointed, there's guidelines for individual residences, and there's guidelines in the planning department that require the context to be considered when these houses are submitted for approval, and I just see that house after house is getting approved when it's not really compatible with the neighborhood and way out of scale. Thank you.
Thank you. And John Melnuch, I'm sorry, it's a little blurred here, so you're going to have to help me with that.
It's Melnuchak. Thank you so much. I concur with other people who thank you for removing this item from the agenda and moving it to February. I live in an Iklar in another neighborhood in Faramado. Some years ago, a group of us neighbors got together, and we put together a petition to have a change in the zoning to keep the houses at one story. Vice Chairman Tuma of the Planning Commission torpedoed that by himself pretty well. So I'm here in support of the people who would like to keep the Iklar neighborhoods Iklar-looking and Iklar-scale. Thank you.
Thank you, John Skufas, to be followed by Mike Mirnami.
Thank you very much. Since it's been pulled from the agenda, I'm going to pass tonight. I do live in Metro Circle, I have for 34 years, and I am in opposition to this particular design. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Mirnami, you're going to have to help me with this, Mirnami? Mirnami, and to be followed by Lenore Siames.
Thank you. My name is Mike Mirnami. I've lived in Metro Circle for 40 years. I just want, I'm going to skip over the details of this house because, but I'd like to point out to council one thing. The Midtown Resilience Association brought up this issue and fought for this issue. It used to be called the, the, the monster home issue. I don't know if you remember that. But anyway, they've, they got, they worked with the city. This is like 15 years ago. Result of that was the city changed its building requirements and introduced the guidelines for, for double, two-story homes. And those guidelines were supposed to, they felt they'd accomplish what they wanted. They would protect the city from the building of monster homes. Well, obviously, that issue has resurfaced. And there's one more thing. This is a big issue citywide because the Midtown Neighborhood Association took a survey this summer, and they got 531 responses, which statistically isn't really significant. And the neighborhoods, they, they were asked to identify, the residents, identify what their issues are that they're most concerned about. And right up the top, there's two issues. One is they want the city council and the commissions to, to support their interests and look after their interests. And two is, what's that called? Architect builds a street and height of buildings. That, that is the monster home issue. And so I'm telling you that your residents and your constituents are very concerned about this. And I hope that they'll take, they'll take this seriously. Because this is not stopped, it's going to spread throughout Palo Alto because there's lots of people buying these old homes on these big lots, and they don't care about the house. They'll tear it down and build whatever they want, if they're allowed to. So thank you.
Lenore Siames, to be followed by Kurt Note.
I just saw this article in the paper a couple of days ago. I don't live in the Metro Circle. I live in another Eichler neighborhood over by Duvernix St. Francis. And I was really, really upset. And I know it's important that everybody who buys a house has the right to do what they want with their property. However, do they also have the right to upset all the other property owners? And I really feel that the city has a responsibility to make sure that those people who live in a particular place with a particular style, in much smaller homes, who've lived there for years, or even just bought their house, have their rights protected as well. And if, if somebody, and I'm sorry for this person, who wants to build a 4,500-square-foot house, if you look around, you see that the houses around you, maybe there are some that are 2,000 square feet, and they all have, also have children in them. So I hope this is really taken into consideration when the city decides whether a house can come in that is just so wrong for the neighborhood. And I just also wanted to add, there was a family on my street that did want to put a second story on. And just about everybody within the limit of feet wrote in against that. And the people themselves withdrew it and found an alternative way to build, stay in the neighborhood. And they never had any bad relationships with anybody going because they respected our rights once it was expressed to them. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Kurt Knut. I hope I got that pronunciation. Thank you. Right, and one, one speaker for item number seven, Herb Borak.
I believe you've already removed this from the consent calendar, so the appropriate time...
Not item number seven, number 10? Oh, seven, it is seven, and it's number five. So did you want to speak to it anyway tonight, or?
Yeah, if it's moved, you know, moved to another time.
Moved to another night.
No, if it's moved to later on tonight's agenda, that's when I'll speak to it.
Okay, I need to check with the city manager. You weren't here. We have removed item number seven from the consent calendar.
We would not be speaking on it tonight. You have too many items on your agenda. We'll have to bring it back on another agenda.
Right, so we'll move this to another night of action, maybe not this year. All right, in that case, I need to have a motion for the consent calendar after item number five and item number seven have been removed.
So moved.
And Councilmember Klein will be voting no on number, second reading, number 10. All right, let's go ahead and vote. And consent calendar passes unanimously with Councilmember Klein voting no on item number 10. You have three minutes to speak on item number 10, Councilmember Klein, if you're interested.
No, I've said my piece on this before.
All right, thank you very much.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Do you need to also note for the record that items five and seven have been pulled?
You know what, I need, yes, I, I have done that. Do you want me to do that again? No, okay, I did that before we voted. And actually, we took a straw poll on item number five, so, but we did have a number of people that were interested in pulling it. So do you want to officially pull that for me, Councilmember Holman?
I moved to pull item number seven.
Okay, and then we'll just go down the line here. I think I heard from everybody on this side. We did it as a straw poll, so, yeah. So we have four people, Councilmember Holman, Scharf, Burt, is that okay?
Yes.
And, and Vice Mayor Niss to pull item number five.
Yes.
If you, if you need that to record for the minutes. And moving on to the, to the action item, we have three substantive action items tonight. And I just want to get a hand call out to who's here for the college terrace market. All right, and who's here for the residential parking permit program? I'm sure there's some that are here for both. Okay, we're going to...
I think there's some here for both.
Anybody, well, yeah, let's go ahead and start this. We have agendized this for 45 minutes, and we know that that's not going to be enough time. So I would like to find out from colleagues if you want to do a hard stop at 8:30 and agendize this for tomorrow night at 8 o'clock, or if you want to push through. Councilmember Scharf.
Well, there are a lot of people here tonight for this item. I think we need to move forward with it. I do think we should rethink where we are at, say, 9:15. We can go to 11 o'clock on these items because we only then have closed session. And that doesn't impact the public if we go into closed session at 11. So that's what I would suggest, is we try and, and that gives us an extra hour and, basically.
Councilmember Berman.
So I agree with Councilmember Scharf. I think, you know, there are a sufficient number of people here for all the items that, you know, it would, I wouldn't feel comfortable pausing it out and asking people to come back if they wanted to participate or be here in person. You make, Councilmember Scharf makes a good point about the closed-session items. So if you're here for the RPP stuff and not for the JJNF market stuff, you might want to go spend some money in town and get some ice cream or some yogurt because it's going to be a little while. But I, I think we should get through all these items tonight.
All right, in that case, why don't we go forward on this? We do have a number of speakers on this as well. And I'm going to ask that the clerk correct this one with William Ross. We can't have people succeeding their time, but they can have five people, and then you have 10 minutes, so.
Just one point of question. When do we do our disclosures on this? Do we do them after the public comment? Is that how that works? I can't remember.
Yeah. Would you like to handle that now?
I'm fine doing it afterwards.
Can I introduce the item first, too?
I'm fine doing it afterwards.
Okay, let's, let's introduce the item and then go through the disclosures after the staff summary. And then also, the applicant has asked for a 10-minute presentation for the changes as well, that we've already had agreed to allow that to happen. So this is for the approval of the proposed grocery store tenant for the College Terrace Center Market based on the interests defined by the August meeting where council requested additional materials and a consideration of penalties along with other supporting information qualifying Mr. Smalley's as an appropriate grocery store tenant per the planned community ordinance approved January 11, 2010. After a short introduction, I'll allow the applicant the 10 minutes that he would like to have to make the presentation to illustrate new elements of the grocery tenant and additional, additional documentation. Then we will do our disclosures, and then we will go out to the public. And actually, I'd like to do the disclosures before the applicant speaks for 10 minutes. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to staff for your introduction.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Shepherd and councilmembers. We are here this evening to review the proposed grocery tenant for the College Terrace Center planned community development. The PC ordinance specifically states that the city approval shall not be withheld unless the city reasonably finds that such proposed grocery tenant is not likely to be compatible, comparable, excuse me, in quality of products and services as JJNF, as it existed and operated on December 7, 2009. This is the second meeting before the council on this item. The prior meeting took place on August 11, earlier this year, where the council asked for more information be provided. The applicant has provided additional information, and as the mayor noted, the applicant is here to make a 10-minute presentation. Thank you.
With that, why don't we go ahead and do our disclosures? Are there, I'm looking at you, Councilmember Scharf.
Yes. So I have some disclosures. So first of all, I spoke with Jim Baer today about this project. And I asked Mr. Baer if they would be willing, if the applicant would be willing to increase the penalty from $1,000 to $2,000 a day. Mr. Baer indicated to me that he would have an answer from the applicant tonight. So that's the first disclosure. The second disclosure I have is I called Mickey Wernas today and spoke to Mickey of the Mickey's project. Mickey indicated to me he would very much like to do this project, and he was completely willing to do this project. And in fact, he'd gone as far as having several meetings, had gotten together a grocery manager, a baking manager, a meat manager, a beer and wine manager, a produce manager, and that he was ready to go forward on this. But the sticking point was that they were not allowing him to be the operator, that Mr. Smalley's son needed to be the operator, and they were unwilling to do that. And that influenced my thinking in this, so I thought it was important to disclose it.
Councilmember Burt.
Yes, two weeks ago, I met with Doria Suma and Jeff Lovinsky, if I got it right. And, and I also met with Jim Baer. And no information that is not in the record was disclosed, to my knowledge.
Councilmember Holman.
I had phone conversation with Doria Suma and Jeff Lovinsky, and I don't believe there's anything that is not in the public record.
Councilmember Berman.
I had a phone conversation with Jim Baer a couple of weeks ago, and I did not receive any information that's not in the public record.
Councilmember Price.
Ditto.
Councilmember Klein.
I have exchanged voicemail messages with Jim Baer, but not spoken to him directly. And I have, there's no, nothing that I gained from those short voicemail messages that's not in the public record. I did have a call approximately two weeks ago from Mark Corey, who at one time with his brothers operated the store at JJNF. And I had one follow-up call with him. And I did learn from him that he's had negotiations with Mr. Smalley, but indeed felt that he had an agreement with Mr. Smalley this year, but that that was, to use his phrase, yanked out from him. And that he also authorized me to disclose what I have just stated.
I'm sorry, disclose, I didn't hear that.
What didn't you hear?
I didn't hear what you said you were disclosing.
What I, everything I said before.
Last sentence I couldn't hear.
Okay, let me try again. That, I'm not sure where, that he negotiated...
Just that he authorized it?
That he, that Mr. Corey had negotiated with Mr. Smalley, Patrick Smalley, and that Mr. Corey thought that he had an agreement with Mr. Smalley to have the lease at the site for the grocery store. But that at the last moment, Mr. Smalley pulled out from that and instead had negotiated the lease that we have before us tonight. And I specifically asked Mr. Corey whether I had his approval to disclose what I have just stated, and he said yes. And whether he is in the audience, I don't know, since I do not know the man by sight.
Thank you. Councilmember Schmidt.
Yes, I had a conversation with Doria Suma and Jeff Lovinsky and talked about items that are in the packet.
Vice Mayor Niss.
I feel compelled to disclose I've talked to no one, although I've certainly read many, many emails.
And I have had a phone conversation with Jim Baer on this item, but there's nothing to reveal that it was, that isn't already in the packet, so there's no new information. With that, I would like the applicant to have their 10 minutes. There's Jim. Welcome, and you can begin.
Good evening, Mayor Shepherd and councilmembers. Jim Baer and Uriel Chavez, who will speak in the latter part of this introduction so that he can answer any questions you might have. We are providing comprehensive, unredacted documents related to all matters with more than 276 pages of exhibits. This solves one of the concerns that was expressed by council in August. Uriel Chavez, as grocery operator, is under a 20-year operating agreement. Uriel Chavez comes with his background with operations of the 40 Chavez markets, including Mi Pueblo, La Hacienda, Chavez Markets in Ardegas. With annual gross revenues of over $200 million at their peak, these markets, primarily in the peninsula and all in Northern California, cause Uriel Chavez to be an extraordinary candidate for serving as a grocery operator for the College Terrace Market. Uriel has owned two of his own stories that he built from ground up. Many of the Chavez family markets are similar in size. The College Terrace Market, Uriel will introduce himself and accept questions from councilmembers in a few minutes. And I want to make sure that in the operating agreement, it is a full delegation of all responsibilities, all authority, for managing all grocery operations. It's not a line of reporting in to James Smalley in the, in the College Terrace Market. It is an independent agreement that says you, you run the grocery store. And I must also add that that was an agreement that was prepared to be signed with, with Mickey Wernas, and there was discussions about who do we go with? So I, and we admired Mickey very much. College Terrace Market is highly capitalized for durable success with nearly $1 million, which is extraordinary for a small market this size. The exhibits provided staff and city council show a bank statement of the market with over $750,000 invested within the past six weeks by James Smalley. Refrigeration racks and cook lines are financed by vendors greatly leveraging the $750,000. The landlord is additionally providing, the landlord is not in Smalley's, the landlord is additionally providing $101,250 or 4.5 months' initial free rent after the store first opens, not during its construction. The landlord has also guaranteed the lender that the grocery store rent will be paid. The landlord and James, and Patrick Smalley, who have no ownership interest in the property, have also guaranteed the $40 million real estate loan. The rent for the market is well below market. It's an effective rent of $1.88 per square foot or $22,500 per month, comparable or less than what JJNF were paying in their latter years. The landlord's surety, the landlord provides surety for $200,000 per day that is twice the fine that the city could compel related to the grocery store being empty, not having an operator. This is under Palau Municipal Code 1.08010, and it can be volunteered. It can't be compelled. It can be compelled once it's volunteered as a condition. The city's consultant, grocery store consultant, Sudi, endorses College Terrace Market. The Sudi, the city, the city's Sudi report is included in the set of August documents for the council packet. They endorse the market after reviewing Uriel's resume. After reviewing the information provided to the consultant, it is the opinion of the consultant that the advisor, that the proposed store layout, marketing strategy, management team, and advisors will create a store that will be of benefit to the community of Palo Alto. College Terrace Market will be comparable, if not superior, in quality of products and services to JJNF Market. The PC Zone requires city council to approve the grocery operator unless there are reasonable grounds to determine that the proposed operator will not be comparable in products and service to JJNF in 2009. So you not only have a staff report saying, let's approve the operator, you also have your own grocery store consultant, Sudi, who said, let's approve this operator, which raises the question of reasonableness. The last item is the only 2014 precondition for the PC Zone is not that the operator be approved, but that the construction commence after approval of the grocery store lease. The grocery store lease was approved in writing in 2013, from assistance, December 2013, from Assistant City Attorney Carr Silver. We ask council to direct staff to issue permits... We ask council to direct staff to issue permits that were initially submitted 90 days ago and thereafter with timely responses to staff's detailed and appropriate questions. So if the issue is, "We haven't started construction, but we aren't being issued construction permits because there's a wait and see how the operator's approved or disapproved," you can understand that that's a dilemma that we need the council to solve fairly. Thank you, and here's Uriel Chavez.
Hello, good evening. My name is Uriel Chavez. I'm very excited about the college terrace market, a little bit about myself. I did start with our very first Chavez market on Arguello in Redwood City, bagging groceries, stocking shelves when I was nine years old. There afterwards, all through high school, moved around the different departments, everything from produce, from the butcher shop, the kitchen, cashiering, off to college, military, back, finished college, and right back into the grocery stores where I'd operated first different projects, then CFO of La Hacienda Markets. Constant discussions, growing, establishing, everything from a management structure, bringing the services, products, bringing up basically the management structure up to date, everything from systems, ordering, produce selection. I mean, I could go in exaggerated details on everything that there is to know about operating a grocery store. For college terraces, what I see, what I envision, what I plan on doing for this store is a combination of a lot of my favorite stores. This is a community market. This is a small market. This is one that is products selection, everything is going to be determined mostly by the community. These are going to be through, you know, working with the community, talking with the community, having employees as well as myself constantly asking, you know, "What can we do to make this better? What kind of products do you want to see? What kind of services can we provide?" This is one of those things that we have learned is one of the secrets to, you know, operating a community grocery store, and that's talking with people, everybody in the community. We will be providing a store that is exceptionally clean, high-quality products. I mean, for me, the vision that I have is going to be a produce selection, you're going to be able to have a little outside area that rivals Sagonas. You're going to have a butcher counter that's going to be more like Schwab's, a deli counter that'll be a lot like Roberts with different selections. And you have aisles that are going to be not as nice as Drager's, definitely not as expensive as Drager's, but definitely have a good variety of selection, and it will be a full-service grocery store. I do want to save some time for everybody and actually open up myself to any questions you might have of me or Jim or anything else, but, I mean, we're very excited about establishing a community market.
Quickly before your questions, so staff and council can plan the evening. We have about 20 speakers to speak in support of college terrace market who we've asked to stand rather than using council time. So if those in the back who are in support of college terrace market could stand, about 20, only a few of whom will speak. Thank you very much. Now, any questions for Uriel or me? Thank you.
All right, there's two minutes left here, 10 minutes, but you, we will go out for public comment and then come back for council, and that's when you might have questions from councilmembers. And with that, I do have 14 speaker cards right now on this item. And William Ross, I asked you to find five people to do a 10-minute item where I saw you back there. There you are in the far, and if you could work with the clerks on that, I'd appreciate it. And with that, I'm going to hold to the three minutes for full, so that you have your full speaking time, but if you don't need to use your three minutes, that's fine too. So with that, let's go ahead and begin. One, two, three. Our first speaker is Mary Jane Marcus, to be followed by Maura Omen.
Sorry, my heart's pounding. So I live, I've been connected to college terraces in Calav for about 10 years, and I just wanted to, I was thinking about this space. I live about two blocks from there. And I knew that the landlords were elderly, I think in their 80s, and I was thinking, well, what is their motivation to do this big development? I mean, they have probably had a good life, and I'm guessing it's to support their kids and their grandkids and maybe projects in the community. And, you know, I was thinking about my own daughter tonight and putting her to bed and wanting to ensure, just like they do, that whatever community benefit or public benefit also survives in perpetuity. And so that's why I'm speaking here tonight, is just to ensure that we set up conditions so that public benefit sustains regardless of the success of the grocery tenant. Obviously, you can see it's very complex to figure out whether a grocery tenant's going to succeed or not. And I, and what I'm proposing and what a number of people in transition Palo Alto support and some of the College Terrace Residents Association supports is that if the grocery store fails, the lease at a very reduced rate turns to the city for community use. So then we don't have to worry about it being a perfect setup with a grocery store. We know that we'll have a community benefit. And given that, you know, they had a square footage increase of maybe about 20,000 square foot of what they would have done, if they could have done if they had redeveloped it under neighborhood commercial, and I'm not sure the estimates of its $5 to $7 million benefit they've gotten by that rezoning, that some of that benefit should accrue, we should make sure it accrues to the community. And the last thing I want to mention is just, we really do need community space. We had a world-centric there, which closed down and offered a lot of great community space, free space for the community. We also lost common ground. And in the area around California Avenue, we really have very little. College Terrace Library is tiny, there's really no space there. You know, you've got Mitchell Park Library, Lucy Stern, they're all quite far, and we really need some community space in the California Avenue area. So just want to reiterate, I urge you to, I'm not sure of how you, how, I haven't consulted a lawyer, but to find a way to ensure that the public benefit is retained regardless of whether the grocery tenant succeeds. And to do that by having the lease revert to the city for public benefit, so, thank you.
Maura Omen, to be followed by Joseph Oster.
Good evening. My name's Maura Omen. I'm a resident of Palo Alto. I am a mother of a seven-year-old daughter here, and I'm also the executive director of Blossom Birth Services that's on California Avenue. And I'm here this evening to support my friend Mary Jane because she was feeling a little nervous about being here, but she has a lot of people behind her supporting what she has presented this evening. And we just want to urge you to ensure that the public benefits of this space remains in perpetuity so that there is a community space for us to gather. And I basically want to second what she's saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph Oster, to be followed by Trish Sidens.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Ersker, a trustee of the Clara E. Chilco Trust that owns the property that will house the college terrace market. I would like to read portions of a letter I sent to the editor of the College Terrace Residents Association newsletter. Dear editor and college terrace neighbors, it seems that many college terrace residents may not be aware of who is the real owner and developer of the college terrace center. A little history is offered. The property was acquired by Joseph Jamir sometime in the 1920s. Joseph, his wife Jessie, and adopted daughter Clara lived on the property in what was then the town of Mayfield. Clara married Amal Ersker, a custom tailor, and they had two children, Joseph and Eldora. During the Depression, Amal's family moved in with the Jamirs. In 1947, Clara and Amal divorced, and Clara later married Erv Chilco, hence the name Chilco on the trust. Clara died in 1960, and Joseph and Eldora became beneficiaries and trustees of the trust estate. Clara's objectives were won to keep the property in the family for future generations, to develop the property to its fullest potential, and to give something back to the community she loved. The first grocery store on the property was Bowlanders, started in the mid-'20s and which was later bought by the Garcia brothers, John, Joe, and Frank, soon after the end of the World War II. Thus began a 60-plus-year relationship between the Erskers and the Garcias. And we lived behind the grocery store from about 1935 till 1977, so we have more than a casual acquaintance with the Garcias. When Joseph and Eldora decided it was time to fulfill their mother's wishes, JJNF was to be the cornerstone of the project, and the Erskers were devastated when JJNF went out of business, but vowed to find a replacement of the quality of JJNF. This has not been an easy task with the downturn of the economy and many restrictions placed on the development. However, the Erskers feel that the present offering of college terrace market will indeed fulfill all requirements, and the family will do everything in its power to help it succeed, just as it did with JJNF. The family asks for your support. College Terrace Market will be operated by Uriel Chavez. Uriel comes from a family of grocers or stores throughout the area, and his prior experience in the grocery as well as other businesses uniquely qualify him to lead. I urge you to approve this lease. Thank you.
Thank you. Trish Sidens, to be followed by Annette Portello-Ross.
Yes, my name is Trish Sidens, and I am here on behalf of the Ersker family who owns this property. I've taught school here in this area with Alice Ersker and have been friends with the Ersker family for over 35 years. I've always known them to be extremely community-oriented. Alice is well-known in the community for her breads. Wherever she went, whether it was to the nursery or the drugstore, she would always take her breads, and she was well-known for those. But more importantly, the Erskers tore down their family home so that JJNF could expand. Their friendship was that great, and their devotion to that grocery store was that great. Then the Erskers offered below rent to the JJNF market for many years, and so that they could thrive. When the Erskers heard that JJNF was going out of business in the downturn, they were devastated. They really were. But they were, they were determined that they would find a way to continue because their whole plan for this development was around JJNF. So they were totally taken aback when this, when this failed. But the problem was, once JJNF failed, the process had already taken seven or eight years, and grocers were hesitant to come in because this process has gone on for 10 years. 10 years to get this land developed. Both of our families have raised our children here and lived modestly, the Erskers in Barron Park, the Sidens in the Midtown area. Frankly, I'm just appalled at how long this drawn-out 10-year process has taken. What it has done to the Ersker family financially and emotionally is not okay. This is a family who has lived in Palo Alto, who cares about Palo Alto, and this process has gone on long enough. Enough is enough. The Erskers are good people who want to develop their inherited land for the benefit of the community. Approve the college terrace market, which the Erskers are personally guaranteeing. Now, this is a teacher and an engineer in this area who are guaranteeing this exorbitant $200, $2,000 a day. I mean, how much more can you promise to a community than what they're doing? Even after all of this, they are wanting to continue. Please approve the college terrace center.
Thank you. Annette Portabello-Ross, to be followed by Toni Karasko.
Years ago, I worked with a legal secretary who had a sign at her desk that read, "Lack of prior planning on your part does not constitute an emergency on my part." When it comes to serious business, that's a good maxim to follow. There is not sufficient time tonight to thoroughly assess the issues recently raised about the suitability of the proposed management team for this project. James Smalley is not an experienced grocer, and there are some red flags regarding the background and qualifications of the person identified to partner with him and provide the needed expertise. It is unfortunate that new information is surfacing at this late date, but that is not something for which the public is responsible. Surely, the applicant knew of some of the issues, and staff might also have probed more before recommending approval. A simple reading of Mr. Chavez's resume raises questions about the claimed years of experience. At the very least, the issues raised warrant further review so that the city can be certain that its trust is well-placed. Approval tonight would be premature. The applicant has had nearly half a decade to find a grocer who satisfies the stated requirements. He has not succeeded at this. It is prudent to ask why this is. Could it be the location, the square footage of the market, the terms of the lease, changed circumstances? Clearly, something is an obstacle. Yet the applicant continues to ask for a big give from the city. Is he genuinely serious about meeting the terms of the agreement and sustaining that over the useful life of the development? Or is he just doing what he must in the short term to win approval? Seven of you were on the council that approved the zone change. You had reservations then, you had reservations this last August, and I think there are many good reasons for you to have reservations now. Much has changed in the past five years, and more change is contemplated by VTA. Is a grocery at this location even realistic? Does it really make sense? It may well be smarter to revert to the original neighborhood commercial zoning, build the project as large as is allowed under that zoning, and get this project done once and for all. Thank you.
Toni Karasko, to be followed by Rosine Ferber.
Honorable Mayor Shepherd and members of the city council, my name is Toni Karasko, 1885 El Camino in Palo Alto. I'm here to speak to you about the design and the location of this store. When Karasko and Associates was hired about 10 years ago, the project had an expressed criteria from the ownership that the grocery stores pay, that they had a long-term commitment to the Garcia family and that they wanted to retain them at that location because of their long history. We started the plan to keep the grocery store where it was, in its existing buildings, bad as they were, and we could not find a way to renovate them. We then looked at a second plan that would demolish the existing buildings and keep them in that same location. As it turned out, talking to the Garcia family, they were not really convinced that that location would be viable because they needed both regional traffic as well as neighborhood traffic and Stanford students to patronize it. We changed the location to the most prominent part of the project, this, the north, the northeast corner, where cars coming by could see an open-air market and be attracted to spend some of their money in that grocery store so that it then became more viable. So, given that, we, after several public hearings, probably 30 or 40, between neighbors, neighborhood meetings, city public hearings, we had this approval granted. Now, I can assure you that this new grocery store, location and size and quality is far superior to the ones that the buildings occupied, that the grocery store occupied. In my 30 years of experience in doing buildings in Palo Alto, I think this was the largest public benefit that I have experienced. Thank you.
Rosine Ferber, to be followed by Nicole Byer.
Hello, good evening. My name is Rosine Ferber. I have been I have been, I'm a resident of Palo Alto for the last thirty-one years. I've raised a family here, three children. I am very familiar with J.J. Market. I miss it very much. I enjoyed going there, and I found it very convenient. I think definitely a supermarket is necessary there, and I would like, I'm here really to speak about Jim Smalley. He's a personal friend of mine, and I have known him for the last ten years. He is a very substantial person, trustworthy, very good character, is a good man, a good He is honest, dependable, and loyal, and I think that he is the right person for this, for this, to be an operator for this market. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicole Byer to be followed by Diane Finkelstein.
Hi, my name's Nicole Byer. I've been a resident of Palo Alto for the past twenty-five years, and I have four kids. And I was a huge customer of J.J. and F. Market. Being that I have four kids, I'm constantly going down, up and down El Camino Real, and have very much missed that market. And I have known Jim for many years, and I know of his passion about this project. He's put his heart and soul into it. I agree with Rosine, he is one of the most hard-working, trustworthy, dependable. Nobody wants this project to succeed more than he and his father, who have put this project together. And I just think, I don't know what the negative things that are going around about he's not capable of this project, but I think not only is the location great, the re, what they're trying to do is make it even better than J.J. and F. was, so that it will be successful. And I don't see any reason why the council shouldn't approve this project. This has gone on a long time, and it's cost a lot of money and time for the people who are involved in the project.
Thank you. Diane Finkelstein to be followed by Brian Spears. You know, he already has four other people, so...
Well, I'm still everybody, so...
Okay, all right. It's fine. It's up to you. Brian Spears to be followed by David Sterlis.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Brian Spears, and I'm part of the College Terrace Center team. I became involved in the project about two or three months ago through my relationship with Canyon Capital, who are the financial backers of the project as well. You know, I got to tell, you know, right off, we're surprised we're at this juncture based on, you know, the review we did of the project. We really like the project. We really like the team in place. We especially like Mr. Osher and his, you know, passion about his own property and wanting to develop this and keep it in his family after it's completed. You know, we also looked at the project, and we looked at all the conditions in place. You know, I read a lot of the emails, and I'm not, you know, from Palo Alto, I'm from a little further north, but some of the stuff that's being said is really inaccurate. We absolutely need the grocery store occupied. We don't want to build this building and leave that space empty. It's really critical to the underlying financials of the whole project. Mr. Osher needs an operating, successful grocery store in order to get his final financing, so he can keep it in his family. So I just want to, you know, dispel that. Another thing I, you know, everybody's talking about the benefits to the city. I think, you know, nobody's mentioning that there's eight BMR, below-market-rate homes being built as well, in addition to the grocery store. So I think there's a lot of positives about the project. Certainly, there's always going to be groups of people that are against projects, and rightfully so. They live in the neighborhood. The council also would have reason to be, to ensure it's a good grocery store. But I think James Smalley has done a lot to mitigate your concerns with the addition of Uriel Chavez and his history, the amount of time they put into planning, to demonstrating how great this store is going to be. Again, I can't say what J.J. and F. was like, because I may have was in there once in my life, but I think the product they're putting together is a great product, and I think the city has lots of milestones in place to ensure that this is a grocery store moving forward, including the store has to be open before any business can take, can start their lease there. So we, as developers, we clearly understand the importance of the grocery store. We clearly want to deliver a good product. That's our goal, and again, we want to deliver this to Mr. Osher when it's all done. So I just wanted to emphasize that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. David Sterlis to be followed by Alice Osher.
I'm also a member of the College Terrace Center Development Team, and I just, I think what I wanted to say has been said by others, so I'll just make it brief. We're dedicated to providing a quality product for the city of Palo Alto. We're ready to go, and we definitely support James Smalley as the operator, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Alice Urscher to be followed by Fred Baylen.
My name is Alice Ursker. I am Joe Ursker's wife. I am not a trustee of the estate, but I've put considerable time and effort into the project. You have been given the professional appraisal of the SUTI organization, which has compared the J.J. and F. market with the College Terrace Market. So I know you have seen this comparison, which shows that the College Terrace Market does fulfill all the same requirements of J.J. and F., and probably overrules, even goes farther than what J.J. and F. has ever done. I must remind you and some of the speakers in the audience that you are here, we are all here, for approval of the market, that the approval of the PC development has been long past, and we are constantly aware of the public benefit. And there has been no lack of planning over these last ten years, I assure you. Other grocers have been approached, and many have reached the point where they were ready to agree, but when it comes down, frankly, to doing business in Palo Alto, they have reservations. We feel that the combination of this Smalley-Chavez combination is ideal for that location. You don't want a big supermarket, for heaven's sakes, a Safeway or something like that, but we do need a good, family-run grocery store, very similar to what J.J. and F. We know, my husband has spoke to you about our relationship with J.J. and F., and I know this, as the fact that we lived behind the store and supported them for a good many years. We would do the same for the College Terrace Market, and especially the benefit to the other tenants that will be occupying the project and the development. The grocery store will be a great benefit. Please approve the lease. Thank you.
Thank you. Fred Baylen to be followed by Malcolm Slaney.
PC 5069, Section 4B, quote, "The grocery tenant, if it is a party other than John Garcia doing business as J.J. and F., shall be subject to the prior approval of the city of Palo Alto and shall not be withheld unless the city reasonably finds that such proposed grocery tenant is not likely to be comparable in quality of products and services as J.J. and F. as it existed on December 7, 2009," unquote. The proposed grocery tenant, James Smalley, DBA J&amp;A Family Market, with no grocery experience, does not meet the condition, nor can any grocery personnel hired via employment contract by a non-grocer intermediary satisfy the condition. Only via a lease from owner directly to and exclusively for an experienced grocer that you approve as tenant can the condition be satisfied. So why are we here again, five years after approval, and that has still not happened? An attorney for the ownership team writes in August, quote, "After engaging in multiple discussions with grocery operators, our client selected the only grocery tenant, J&amp;A Family Market Incorporated, willing to enter into a lease on the same terms and subject to the same conditions as previously negotiated with Mr. Garcia," unquote. If this is indeed the case, why not renegotiate the terms of the lease until a suitable grocery can be found? There is no PC requirement of minimum dollar amounts in the lease, just a requirement for a quality grocery tenant. But the applicant's team says they cannot meet the condition, and therefore the city has to work with them to institute a workaround suitable to their needs. You have only one cut at this. After the approval, if you have allowed a non-grocer as tenant, from that moment on, we get what they say as a grocer. But as intended, a lease at arm's length to a quality grocer is a powerful document and a path towards stability. If the grocer pays and does not violate covenants, it cannot be kicked out. That is the best way. It is the required way to maximize the opportunity for a successful grocery on this site. Direct the applicant to go back and return with a signed lease from an experienced grocery tenant that you can approve. If they will not, or if they cannot, and the overriding public benefit that this PC was built on cannot be brought forth as intended, let the permit expire. The PC 5069 overlay dissolve, and the site revert to neighborhood commercial zoning. Thank you.
Malcolm Slaney to be followed by Irina Cross. To be followed by Robert Phillips.
Hi, my name is Malcolm Slaney, and my family and I have lived in College Terrace in here for about the last ten years. I urge the council to not approve this PC application. The applicant has not demonstrated that a grocery store is viable in this, in this location. The applicant will say anything to get the permission to build such a large structure in our neighborhood. A couple of years from now, when the market has spoken, our neighborhood will have this monstrosity. The neighborhood, the developer will be laughing all the way to the bank, and yet another PC submission benefits the developer at a large cost to our community. Please send this application back to the drawing board. Thank you.
Irina Cross to be followed by Robert Phillips. To be followed by Doria Suma.
My name is Irina Cross. My name is Irina Cross, and I lived in the College Terrace for over thirty years. So I lived through all the J.J. and F. drama, but it's not what I want to talk about. More? Okay, good? Okay. First, sorry, I'm a little nervous. First, I want to point out that when Mr. Baer talked, he forgot to mention one important point, that Surrey report endorsed the grocery store as comparable to J.J. and F. with Mickey in charge. Look it up. It's all there. Secondly, I think council should be aware who is Mr. Chavez is. For example, it would be very prudent to ask him, what did he do for the last five years? Well, he had not worked anywhere near the grocery store. So would you hire such a person to run your grocery store? I wouldn't mind. That's all I wanted to say.
Robert Phillips to be followed by Doria Suma. To be followed by Jeff Lewinsky.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Robert Phillips, and I'm a longtime resident of College Terrace. I expect that many comments tonight in this project will focus on issues surrounding the grocery store, and they already have, and understandably so. And one of the things that all of us remember is, or a lot of us remember, is that this project was sold with the idea that this was the, quote, "only way to save J.J. and F." And then as now, the applicant showed their ability to mobilize groups of people behind this. If, J.J. and F., of course, is long gone, although I hear it, I hear it invoked tonight in various ways, but it is gone. I think the next proposal by the applicant was for a secret, at least the public group of four managers who had between them a hundred years of grocery experience. I'm not clear what happened to this group, but then we heard it was going to be Mickey Wernas and Uriel Chavez, and now the experienced team is down to Uriel Chavez alone, which is fairly rapid, rapid rate of evaporation. And you wonder why residents might be skeptical about the claims, about whether or not the applicant is truly serious about providing a working grocery store. At the very least, I would urge the council to provide the level of due diligence in screening Uriel Chavez that they would use if they were hiring for a senior management position within the city. I've seen nothing in a staff report that indicates that any such due diligence has been performed, and this concerns me deeply. Like many residents, I am deeply worried this is another PC project that will be granted based on public benefits that will simply never materialize, and I don't need to mention what some of those others are, I don't believe. But what I really want to speak to is the elephant in the room, which is the project itself. In August, Councilman Burt said, "If this project were being proposed today, it would not be approved." I believe this is an acknowledgement that proposed building is simply too massive for the site, and is only going to contribute to the already pressing problems of traffic, parking, job-resident imbalances that the council is wrestling, council and staff are wrestling with. These are the negative impacts on the community that the, quote, "the tenuous public benefit of a grocery store," at that time J.J. and F., was designed to help balance. The problems have become far worse in Palo Alto since the project was approved, and I think the need for a grocery store has actually gone down, given the opening of Trader Joe's, the very successful farmer's market in California, and the pre-existing grocery stores at Country Sun and Molly Stone. So I actually don't believe, personally, and there's others who probably disagree, that the public benefit from a small, minimally viable grocery at 2180 is going to be very large, and I think that's what is being proposed. I would urge the council to do the right thing and reject the application. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Doria Suma to be followed by Jeff Lewinsky, and then we have ten minutes with William Ross, who is, five people have given up their speaking rights.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Doria Suma, College Terrace. I'm here to ask you not to approve the grocery tenant and operator proposed for 2180 El Camino. I think we all know what it was supposed to be, what the ordinance says. In August, the applicant let us know they could not find a grocer for the location, and James Smalley, who is a son and business partner of the developer, Patrick Smalley, but who has no grocery experience, would be the tenant for the space, and that he would hire an experienced grocer to operate the business. The applicant's original proposal included a team of four apparently experienced grocers whose names and resumes he would not reveal to the public. In August 2014, a consultant hired by the city opined that the project could be successful based on his assertion, and that assertion included that there was a team of four developers that had, I mean, four grocers who had over a hundred years of experience in the grocery business. In late September, the College Terrace Residents Association was contacted by the applicant, who expressed a desire to meet with the board and residents in order to introduce the grocery operator, Mickey Wernas, and another consultant who would work with him, Uriel Chavez. The original team of four had disappeared, so now the team, the consultant to the city had vetted, was no longer part of the project. On October 5th, Uriel Chavez, James Smalley, and Jim Baer made a present, I should say November, presentation to the CTRA Board and residents and distributed some information about the project. This material vastly overstated Mr. Chavez's grocery experience, which according to his own resume, also part of that document, was less than nine years. The same materials contained a vision and value section that was almost entirely cribbed from the first several pages of this famous chef Alice Waters book. I mean, that kind of stuff just does, just calls into question the credibility of anything the applicant provides. Questions were raised and answered, but the team from the applicant and the board and residents that attended agreed they, there was still much left to be answered, and they agreed to come back on the 19th. So we went from four, the secret four, to two, to one, and that's why many of us are rightfully concerned about who will be running rightfully concerned about who will be running the grocery store if they have the qualifications to do so. Given the shifting cast of characters, lack of experience, the proposed one-man team, the inconsistencies in the material, and all the remaining uncertainties, many of us are convinced that this proposal has no chance of success. The current penalty of 1,000, maybe 2,000, now it's 2,000, we don't know because this just came in today, is insufficient relative to the financial benefits that the applicants would receive from the 40,000 square feet of office space, and that insufficiency will not compel the owner to restore and maintain a grocery store. That means we are likely to have yet one more massive PC project with insufficient public benefit. I urge the council to do one of two things. Either reject the grocer outright tonight, or use your power to extend the permit. Thank you.
Jeff Lewinsky to be followed by William Ross, and to be followed by Robert Moss.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmember. Oh, that's it. Thank you. I'll try again. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. First, the applicant claims in the packet that the old J&amp;JNF was 5,000 square feet. However, the city staff report from 2009 says that it was actually 8,712 square feet. So the applicant has provided you with false information. In fact, the new grocery store's indoor area will be smaller than the old J&amp;JNF. That's not the only problem. J&amp;JNF failed financially due to growing competition, limited buying power, and the like. But a careful reading of the applicant's latest submission shows the proposed grocery store will be in even worse financial shape. Specifically, the lease shows that the new store will have to pay over $100,000 in additional annual rent due to reassessment under Prop 13. It will have higher property taxes on its share of the building. As a non-chain, it will enjoy no economies of scale or combined buying power. And because customers who love J&amp;JNF have moved on, advertising and promotion costs will rise. J&amp;JNF was a ready in the red and went out of business. So how can a new grocery with higher costs survive? Let's admit that small grocery stores in Palo Alto face stiff odds. J&amp;JNF's failed, Mickey's failed, no one I know is betting Fresh Market will survive. We were told in August that every established grocer contacted turned College Terrace Center down, and the applicant doesn't seem to have much faith in the current proposal either since it's offering to pay a penalty rather than guarantee that the grocer survives. The proposed grocer is not likely to be comparable to the J&amp;JNF of 2009. It's instead likely to be comparable to the J&amp;JNF of 2010, that is, out of business. Here's where we are. Plan A was to retain J&amp;JNF. That has failed. Plan B is the new grocer, and its business plan doesn't add up. Plan C is a penalty if the new grocer fails, but there's no evidence that will produce a grocery store. In short, there's still no plan on the table that guarantees the public will get the benefit this project is supposed to deliver. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, William Ross, I have you, and these are the speakers that I have. Now I am bringing back Diane Finkelstein in because Margaret Heath would like to speak on her own, Nielsen Buchanan, Eileen Stoli, Lydia Koo, and William Ross. You have 10 minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. I previously raised before the council in communications dated November 17th and 26th the thesis that because there are changed circumstances under which this project is being carried out and new information, that in fact, a revised environmental document should be forthcoming. It's worth looking at the underlying environmental document that consists of 30 pages that I refer to. It is now five years and two months old. On pages 28 and 29, and it's the same in both the November 17th staff report and the one that was prepared for this meeting, there is a listing of 18 sources on which the information is based. It's a well-established rule of SEQA that if you refer to something, it has to be in that document. The first one is the project planner's knowledge. You can go down through them. There are a series of documents dated 2009, 2007, 2008, 2009. It's the project plans prepared by Mr. Carrasco that deal with the greenhouse gas analysis. I think that's critical, as we're going to see later. Number 18 is also critical, a Santa Clara Valley Water District groundwater plume map dated April 12, 2004. Number 16 is departmental communications. If you look at the initial study, literally every category has references to maps. Those maps aren't included, either in the negative declaration before you tonight, the one on November 17th, nor when you go back for the records on 2009 when it was initially introduced, are they contained? Let's assume that all those matters could be in the record. I would respectfully suggest that they need to be updated, especially number 18 and the traffic analysis. Why? I looked at number 18, which again is the plume map dated 2004, and thought intuitively, because of the experience on 385 Sherman where the Hewlett-Packard plume was involved, that there must be a more recent document. In fact, one of the things you get when you Google that is a 2014 map prepared by a firm called TerraData that has a contract with the city of Palo Alto to update the maps. If you look at the 2014 map for this site, it shows a plume from the Shell gas station. Although I can't measure it precisely, it looks like it occupies approximately one quarter of the footprint of this property. Those are plumes. Those are hazardous. Why is that critical? Let's go back to the document again. One of the critical concepts in the document, and the document did not indicate that it consulted with the Bay Area Air Quality Management District in page four, is the concept of thresholds of significance. The thresholds of significance were utilized in several documents, principally the project plans, and also the greenhouse gas analysis prepared by Mr. Carrasco, which is referenced as number eight, and also in the cumulative analysis that's set forth in the plan. Please recall that in my November 17th letter, I said, for once, there needs to be a cumulative analysis, and I believe I listed seven other projects, including the Stanford project, both upper and lower, that combined for more than a half million square feet of both residential and office development that's never been assessed on a cumulative basis. But let's go to the more critical one, of the issue of volatile organic compounds and the thresholds of significance as determined by the Bay Area Air Quality Management District, which must serve as a basis for the computations associated with the hazardous materials area, the air quality area, traffic and circulation, and utility availability. Now, regardless of the position on the project, and I think the thing to do is to continue it, quite frankly, to get a further environmental analysis. But the thresholds that were utilized then were subsequently changed. Those changed thresholds were challenged by the Building Industry Association, and they've gone to court, and they're presently before the California Supreme Court in the case of California Building Industry Association versus Bay Area Air Quality Management District, California Supreme Court Case Number S213478. Briefing was finished in May. It's anticipated that there would be some decision on that, probably within six months. But my point is, that needs to be updated. It's critical to all those areas. Why? Well, let's see. If we do a calculation on the two stories of subterranean parking that would be removed and subjected to a TDM analysis, which in 385 Sherman, the traffic demand analysis, which consisted about 180 pages, was part and parcel of the environmental documentation. Staff has changed its position. It now includes the TDM as being part of the environmental review. So right now, you have a difference in treatment. You're going to let a 2009 project go forward with a TDM that isn't approved until the time of the building permit? I suggest that's not wise. There was a calculation made with respect to how much dirt would be removed for 385 Sherman. If I do the same thing here, it leads to an incredible number of truck trips. I start with, I believe it's page 104 of the staff report before you, that shows a 41,000-square-foot footprint for the project. I go down two floors, 28 feet. I get a cubic square footage amount. I divide that by 27 cubic feet to get cubic yards. I come up with the figure of 42,586 cubic yards. Uncompacted earth, it's a standard construction practice, has to be increased by 30% to get the amount that the trucks are actually going to take away. If I do that, I add another 12,700 feet to the 4200, I get 55,361 cubic yards. A trailer truck carries 20 cubic yards. All right? If it's one, that's 2,768 truck trips. If it's two, you divide that in half. Let's go to the discussion about construction impacts under air quality, where it says, "However, in order for emissions from construction equipment to be considered significant, the project must involve extensive use of construction equipment over a long period of time." I would suggest that either 2,700 or 1,350 at that location is significant. How are they going to get there if they're coming from the south? They're going to make a U-turn at Stanford Avenue and come back and try and squizzle in through Oxford. That's something that a TDM plan should examine. Again, staff now includes TDMs at the time of an environmental analysis, not just before the building's permits issued because there's no public examination. I would also suggest that the safe routes to street should be a concern about where those trucks are going to go and whether or not it impacts that. That's another reason why we should do this. Have another environmental analysis. The safety of the community depends upon it. Those streets are narrow. The other aspects that I think are worth looking at in terms of updating deal with such things as housing. Why housing? Housing, it actually relies, the language says, for employees that work on the property now. Well, of course, those three buildings have been demolished. So that analysis is out of date. It needs to be updated. In the original letter on November 17th, I referenced, I believe, seven sections of SEQA, which by analogy would require this updating. I also think the VTA's proposal for the dedicated bus lane, which would be 20 feet from the outdoor stalls that are proposed, is another issue that's critical. But maybe the other one is housing. As you're aware, you're still involved in litigation on that matter, West Meadow Oaks versus the city of Palo Alto, where, among other things, and you just settled one with Mozart, the issue is, is the ordinance value now, is it still legal to have an incremental determination of what that housing commitment is? That's part of the public benefit here. There has never been a nexus analysis that's been set forth to show what the actual housing commitment may be. I would respectfully suggest that it may well be more if that is accomplished. Again, that's another reason for continuing the time for compliance under this ordinance to get an environmental review that's up to date. I don't know exactly what it's going to say, but what's there now is out of date. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Moss, to be followed by Margaret Heath.
Thank you, Mayor Shepherd, and councilmembers. I have a little different perspective on this project than the speakers, almost all the speakers you've heard tonight, and that is that this is a PC. And PCs are not fun things to work with. And in this case, it's a little unusual type of PC. A classic PC is you allow a developer to build more than they're allowed on a site, and in exchange, they give something specific and something quantifiable. But in this case, what the developer is going to be offering is a business. And it's a business which most of the people who are actively in that business rejected. They couldn't get a single operating grocer who was willing to take over the store of that size on that site. They had to get somebody who hadn't been an active grocer for four or five years. So there's a real problem when what you're doing is you're trading construction for an ongoing business. As you know, businesses don't stay in operation forever. It's quite common for businesses to fail and fail fairly frequently and fairly quickly. And in this case, because we have somebody who's not a current grocer and with a site which is going to be difficult because it's only 8,000 or 9,000 square feet to actually make useful and make profitable, I'd say there's an extremely high probability that within three or four years, that store will be closed, and nobody else will come and open a grocery there. Goodbye, public benefit. So what do we do to rectify that? I don't see any way out. I think it's dangerous to have the public benefit in a PC zone be something as intangible as a business. And believe me, saying that you're going to put a grocery store in there and the grocery store is going to be there, I remind you of Mickey's Market at Alma Plaza. It's not a good way to create policy and to operate government. So I think you ought to step back on this and take a whole new approach on what you want to do on that site. Don't try to make the public benefit a business because there is no way you can assure that that business is going to stay in business indefinitely. As I say, my prediction, if you approve this, five years, they're gone, maximum.
Thank you. Margaret Heath.
Good evening. I'm part of a task force of College Terrace and other interested residents who have closely followed this proposed project from the beginning. We have evaluated the public documents provided, the presentations and comments at the last two CTRA meetings, and have been conducting our own research to both verify information and seek additional material as relevant. The additional information from our research, we find quite troubling, as well as relevant to the council and staff. All this material comes from documents available to the public and should be easier to obtain. The following key items of concern that currently require attention from staff and possible direction from council are, one, financial situation. While Mr. Chavez is not the grocery tenant, but rather an employee, his involvement as a possible CFO and other matters related to financial decisions and the economic of the health of the market do merit consideration. Near the end of his four-year period of ownership of the La Hacienda Market in Sacramento, also referred to as Latino Grocers, San Miguel Pharmacy, LG Pharmacies LLC, and Michawacan Super Incorporated at various times, Mr. Chavez filed for bankruptcy. On August 18, 2010, Case Number 1033-194, U.S. Bankruptcy Court, Northern District of California, San Francisco Division. The difference between his assets and liabilities were over $500,000. In addition to his personal debts, on seven debts, he was listed as co-dater with Latino Groceries and on 18 with LG Pharmacies LCC. We find it of concern Mr. Chavez could not isolate his business interests from those of his personal financial affairs. Two, strained relations within the Chavez family market. A few lawsuits between Mr. Chavez and other principals of the Chavez markets are recorded. In one, Uriel Chavez sues Romero Chavez directly. CIV 503707, San Mateo County Superior Court, File 3411. In another, Uriel Chavez is sued by the parent company of the La Sahanda Market locations, Michawacan Super Incorporated, which he owned, which is owned by relatives Romero and Claudia Chavez. CIV 509526, San Mateo Court, Filed 114, 2011. It is possible that the relations between Uriel Chavez and other members of his family in the grocery market business have been strained, and that his four-year period of absence from the grocery business since he left the San Mateo La Hacienda Market in 2010 is at least partially related to a falling out between him and his family members.
Thank you. And our final speaker is Stephanie Munoz.
Good evening, council members. I have something very, very simple to say. I don't think, I'm amazed at the amount of material and the amount of statistics that have come forth regarding this matter and the objections that the neighbors have to it. But I don't think it's really necessary. The point of public benefit is a contingency, that is, a quid pro quo. All you need to do is make the quid line up with the pro quo. This outlandish amount, excuse me, that's provocative, I suppose, this large amount of public, of office space, this very large amount, is being given as a raison, as an exception, with regards to a public benefit. I would say merely do this. If the maker does not follow through in perpetuity with this grocery store, it all goes back to housing, every square foot of office space. Why not? You're being asked to do something different. Merely require that the public benefit for which this large amount of exception is being offered, require that that public benefit be given in perpetuity. It's not necessary to badmouth poor Mr. Chavez or say, if he can do it or if he can't do it. Simply, if they don't have that grocery, change it over to office, change it over from office space to housing, preferably low-income housing. Thank you.
Thank you. And I wanted to see if staff had any comments that you wanted to make about any of the oral communication we just experienced regarding any of the details that we're taking up tonight.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Cara Silver, Senior Assistant City Attorney. I would like to address three of the issues that were made by Mr. Ross. One of the issues was raised in his verbal comments, and then two issues that were raised in a letter that he sent us earlier last week. With respect to the SEQA issue that was raised, the starting point, of course, of any SEQA analysis is to look at the exact council decision that is before the body. And at this point, of course, the SEQA, the discretionary decision is not the review of the entire PC ordinance, but instead the very narrow issue of whether the substitute tenant is comparable to the original tenant that was analyzed in the original environmental review. So given that, we do not believe that SEQA is triggered at this juncture of the process. With respect to the second point raised in Mr. Ross's letter about the penalties that were being offered by the developer as insufficient, I would note that the penalties have been, the penalty offer has been increased to $1,000 a day, which we do believe gives a significant financial incentive to keep a grocery store in place. And third, there was an issue raised about the operability of the extension ordinance that was put into place by the council during the recessionary era. And we did go back and look at the extensions that applied to this project, and we did confirm that the, a one-year automatic extension was applicable under the extension ordinance, and that the additional one-year extension that was granted at a staff level was also appropriate under the extension ordinance. This project is also eligible for an additional and final one-year extension, but that extension needs to go through the Planning and Transportation Commission and then the council for final approval.
And then does that, what's the deadline on that granting of final extension?
They would have, they would have to go through the process by the end of the year.
This year, this calendar year?
Yes.
All right. Were there any other comments you'd like to?
Mayor Shepherd, if I can just add a few additional thoughts, and thanks to Cara for that. This is Hillary Gittelman, the Planning Director. I just wanted to observe, as I'm sure the council has, that there were a number of public comments that talked about whether a grocery would be appropriate at this location, talked about the size of the proposed project, and whether designating a business like a grocery as a public benefit is appropriate. And I'm sure you're all aware that those decisions have already been made. Those were made when the PC ordinance was adopted, and so that's really not the question before the council this evening. We also heard some suggestions about if the grocery fails, the lease should revert to the city for some other community benefit. And that also, I think, is something that we would consider to be basically a renegotiation of the public benefit that was included in the ordinance, and probably something that would have to be done by mutual agreement between the parties, the city and the applicant in this case. The other suggestion was made that the lease should be with the experienced grocery operator like Mr. Chavez instead of with Mr. Smalley. And again, that's something maybe that the applicant could respond to. We also heard tonight about Mr. Chavez's credential, and I think we should let him speak to that. But I will say that as staff, since your last discussion in August, we really felt that it was critical to have this surety. So there was some kind of penalty that if the business started out great, everything was wonderful, and then went out of business, that there was some real significant disincentive for the property owner to keep that space vacant and not lease it for another grocery tenant. And so to that end, we have the offer for $1,000 a day if the space is vacant for longer than six months. And I'm eager to hear from Mr. Baer if that has in fact been raised to $2,000 a day, as Councilmember Scharf indicated, and as one of the speakers indicated, but we haven't heard from the applicant's representative. With that, that's all I have.
If colleagues don't mind, why don't we go ahead and ask Mr. Baer that question about the penalty? If you could just speak to that one item of the penalty.
There has been approval for a $2,000 per day penalty by the owner of the property.
All right. Thank you. I will bring this back to council for action. This is an item for the approval of the grocery store tenant, and that's what's been agendized for tonight. Vice Mayor Ness.
Do you have to get the response in the public? I think we have two minutes left.
Actually, that's true during an appeal process. This isn't an appeal. We just gave the 10 minutes. They didn't use it all. I am happy to go out to the operator and allow him to respond to some of the comments that citizens have made. They had two minutes. I'm happy to give them back the two minutes. Would you like to go ahead and take your final two minutes now with the operator making comments about some of the things that we've heard tonight?
Thank you very much, and thank you, Senior Assistant City Attorney Cara Silver, for addressing Mr. Ross's long beyond statute of limitations issues that he raised. I want to talk about the penalty and the significance of that. $2,000 a day, twice what the city can impose on its own without our voluntary condition of approval for that. Let's see, that's $60,000 a month for a building that rents for 22,500 a month. Let's say I were an operator of a grocery store having a $10,000 a month problem. What do you think that conversation might look like with the landlord of the property? If you help me on my rent by $10,000 a month and you avoid having to pay $60,000 a month to the city, how does that economic model work? I'm just trying to say, of course, they're going to attract another grocery store operator or allow this grocery store operator to succeed. A $60,000 a month penalty is probably what a Safeway pays for midtown or larger. We just understand the magnitude of those dollars for subsidizing and underwriting a healthy grocery business, whether it's Uriel Chavez's or one that takes place 20 years from now. We'll let Uriel now comment.
Thank you.
Sir, myself, I have no intentions of letting this grocery store go down in business. The trust has gone way above and beyond any reasonable efforts that any landlord or tenant would ever make as far as what they give for a tenant to be able to succeed in this. So that itself should say a lot. Myself, investing myself pretty much until my retirement. I mean, I'm excited about the store. I have nothing but great things about this. The experience I do bring, like I said, it's, unless you're not counting my first nine years of life, then everything from thereforth on has been experienced with grocery stores. The last four years, I had to go back to school. I, you know, that was tough as it was. Worked to still support my family, still working. But returning to grocery stores, that's what I plan on doing and will do. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Vice Mayor Ness.
So I probably will not make a motion yet, but I have a number of questions that I wanted to ask. Fred Baylen quoted from the PC, and would you read that back again? One of you has it in front of you, I'm sure. If not, I've got it on my email. But let me say it again in my own words, then. Basically, it says, if we feel that the tenant who has been chosen is not comparable to what was at JJ&amp;F before it stopped operating on December 7th, that we should not be accepting this. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's correct. The language of the condition.
So I am, I am probably leaning toward no, and I will, I will tell you why. I did go to JJ&amp;F a lot. My kids were young. I lived in an area, I had a good friend in Barron Park. That was a very common place for me to shop. I can still walk in there right now and tell you, the meat is way on the left. I can also tell you that they would say, when I walked in, we have your order ready. We know what you want. I'm not sure we're going to find that in this particular era, but I'm very concerned that we are trying to match something that no longer exists. This is where kids rode their bicycles for popsicles. This is where, literally, I knew where to find the cat food. The place was jammed. How many of you remember JJ&amp;F really well? Am I quoting, am I quoting exactly? Do you remember it? Did they know your meat order? I know they did, because I literally used to drive across town to go to that particular market. What we're saying tonight is, do we have something that's comparable? I'm not hearing that yet. I think we might be able to hear it. We may even get to the discussion tonight of extending this permit somewhat, but I'm very concerned that we not have another grocery store, a small grocery store, which are not in vogue these days, by the way, unless they are specialty stores. We watched as Mickey's struggled and went out of business. I worry about the discount grocers and for a variety of reasons. I think Fresh Market is trying to get on their feet as well. As the gentleman mentioned before, we may have too many grocery stores at this point. I don't know. But the agreement made before I was on this council was this would be a PC. It has almost twice the square footage allowed, that this is something that was done because the neighborhood so loved JJ&amp;F. So did I. But it doesn't exist anymore. And unless I can be really certain that that exists again, and it would be pretty hard to duplicate it, I don't think I can support this. So as I said, I'm not going to get to a motion yet, but I'd like to hear what others have to say.
Councilmember Scharf.
Thank you. Is Mr. Hirschner available? I actually had a question for him. If you can come up to the podium. Sir? So first of all, thank you very much for appearing tonight. It's nice to actually meet one of the trustees of the trust and to hear about, you know, how your family's been in Palo Alto for all these years and that. So I really do appreciate you coming. So the question I have, and I see it slightly different than Councilmember Ness. I see what we're called upon tonight is to look and see if the market you're suggesting has services and products that are comparable to JJ&amp;F. And as part of that, it seems to me that you should have a market that has a good chance of surviving. You know, a lot of grocery stores have failed and gone out of business, small ones, and, you know, clearly, market conditions are challenging. What I've heard is, you know, Mr. Chavez is, seems like a good grocer. He seems interested in going forward. But it's interesting to me that Mr. Smalley is going to be the operator, not Mr. Chavez. I'm having a really hard time wrapping my head around why, as the trustee, it would be so important to allow Mr. Smalley's son to frankly create a job for himself in a business that he has absolutely no experience in. And why you aren't directly contracting with Mr. Chavez, and this is a long way of getting to my question, but I wanted to set the stage a little bit. Why you're not contracting directly with Mr. Chavez, or frankly, Mr. Wernas, or I was unclear who Councilmember Klein mentioned, but it was Mr. Corey, I guess, who was with JJ&amp;F, is my understanding of it. So it seems to me that there's at least three operators that seem interested in doing it. And Mr. Wernas told me that the reason he wasn't willing to go forward was frankly that he wanted to be the operator, and Mr. Smalley was insisting that he be the operator. And I guess I just don't understand why you'd put, you know, I don't know how much money this is, but I'll call it a $40 million project, at risk for approval by doing something that seems to the community to be a little bizarre, that you have the developer who's building this inserts his son, who has no experience in the grocery business, to run a grocery store when that is the community benefit. And that's the problem, at least I'm having, and I think some of us are having. And I was just wondering why you're not interested in contracting directly with a grocer? Why Mr. Frankly Chavez?
Repeat, please.
Say that again?
Repeat, please.
Sure. So the question is, is why are you not, why do you want Mr. Smalley in the middle? Some of Mr. Smalley's, you know, it would basically, it's an extra layer, there's a shared profit stuff. It would make it less likely that the business be successful rather than contracting directly with an owner-operator who has experience in the grocery business like Mr. Chavez, frankly.
And your question?
That is my question.
Well, first.
So the question is, why are you not contracting directly with an owner-operator like Mr. Chavez?
The thought has not come up. When we originally approached a lender, James volunteered to put the grocery store in business and run it. And here, he was talking to the, one of the chief officers of Canyon, and that was accepted on the spot. As a side issue, this is a question, the way the PC is constructed, there can be no other tenants allowed on the premises unless a grocery store is operating. Am I correct? Am I correct?
So, let me just stop for just a second. So are you saying that if the grocery store goes out of business, that the other tenants have to vacate? No. I mean, that's.
The grocery has to be open and operating before the other tenants.
So we are burdened, if you will, with keeping a grocery store, or first, opening it, and keeping it open. It is a prerequisite to have other tenants. Now, if we are not allowed to take any other risks, I'm a little bit perplexed. allowed to take any other risks, I'm a little bit perplexed. Now, we have vetted both Uriel, and we feel that James is capable and desires to run this grocery store. That's a secondary issue. The primary issue is, is grocery store has to be in place in order to meet the continuing wordage of the PC. One could argue that this is, all of this is really not necessary.
All right. Well, thank you very much. I was curious as to...
Anybody else?
So I just think...
Right.
So for me, at least, I think I'm only really willing to approve the project if we have a direct ownership with a grocery tenant. You know, I'd like, I would like to see the property owners put in an experienced person in position of owning the grocery business, someone having control of the critical decisions-making, and having the full stake in its success. And I guess this notion of Mr. Chavez being a long-term personal services doesn't really make sense to me. And I really would like to see a direct owner, a direct grocery tenant in there who has experience in the business, where it doesn't seem like it's just nepotism. And that's sort of how it feels right now. You know, the experienced grocer appears to be a consultant earning a fee, and that's, at some point, I'd like, maybe Mr. Chavez, maybe you can address, is that your role in this? What is the real structure here?
The question is whether, what's my financial, what's the financial structure?
Well, no. The question is this, is Mr. Smalley is the owner-operator, from what I understand of this. You're a consultant on this, basically, and you have a long-term contract to be a consultant and to help him run the grocery store. It's unclear to me why the contract is not directly with you and why you're not running the grocery store, why he is.
Well, I would be running the grocery store, and the whole reason why I'm not is, A, I don't have the capital for it, and other is I get to sleep better at night. I've had my own grocery stores before. They're tough. I mean, they're rewarding, but they're tough, and it's very stressful. And this is one of those things where, for me, it's actually a win-win. I mean, if the store succeeds, I do better. The, for me, it's no risk as far as what I have to put into it, which I've done before, and I get to do something that I enjoy doing. I get to wake up every morning and just be excited about going to work. So for me, it's win-win on all accounts.
So who makes the operating decisions? You or Mr. Smalley in terms of what to stock on the shelves, what?
That would be me.
That'd be you. And you have a written agreement that spells that out?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
No problem.
I just want to follow up with a question with you, Councilmember Scharf. You are talking about the lease document. Is that correct?
Yeah, I'm talking about...
Not, the lease document is not in the operator's name, and so that's what your concern is.
Well, my concern is not the lease document. My concern is, who's actually running the grocery store? You know, what the community is looking for is a grocery run by an experienced grocer. And I frankly think Mr. Chavez meets that. The question is, is though, he's not the owner-operator. He's merely a consultant who gets paid a fee. And I'm trying to understand his role in this and why they're not contracting directly with him and where he gets to make the decisions. Mr. Smalley could still provide the capital and stuff. It just seems funny, especially since Mr. Wernas has told me the reason he's not the operator is because they wouldn't let him be the operator. They wanted Mr. Smalley to be, and they wanted this structure. And I'm not sure if I heard from Councilmember Klein that he had a similar conversation. Was it with Mr. Corey? And so it's clear to me they could find a grocer. They could go directly to the grocer and have him as the operator. And I don't really understand why they're not doing that. And that's really what I wanted to get, is an understanding of why that is not happening in that way.
Would you like that to be answered by anybody from the applicant here? Right. Would you like to have an answer to that question right there?
Oh, yeah, I would like to have an answer to that.
Okay. And please identify yourself.
My name is Michael Polent. I'm an attorney with Manap Phelps &amp; Phillips in Palo Alto, and I am one of the attorneys that represents the ownership. With all due respect to the comments that were made by Mickey and the Querries, neither of them has any accuracy to how the discussions transpired. There were long negotiations with both groups. The financial terms were never agreed upon. And the fact that Mickey suggests that because he could not be the operator is the reason that he pulled out is simply untrue. We had months of negotiations. We were at the point of documenting the entire transaction. It was going to be a joint venture, not an operator agreement. He was going to come in as an owner exactly as Councilmember Scharf has suggested he would like to see. Had nothing to do with being an operator. I'm not sure why Mickey suggested that, but it was his decision and his decision alone to pull out. From the Querries' perspective, they were never part of J.J. and F, so please let me clarify that point at the outset. The Querries came in after J.J. and F went out of business. They were also offered an opportunity to come in as the operator or as an assignee of the lease. From the economic perspective, the Querries refused to meet the minimum requirements that would make the project economically viable even with the subsidized rental stream. So I'm trying to just offer a little bit more clarity in terms of how those discussions transpired. And I certainly want to suggest that if the council would prefer to have, and I'm just speculating on what you're looking for, but if they would like a entity or a limited liability company in which Uriel Chavez has an ownership interest, so that there is a vested interest as part of the operator role that he is serving, I am quite confident that the ownership would agree to that, if that would satisfy what the council is looking for by having that vested interest. I'm happy to answer more questions about the negotiations with either Mickey or the Querries, but I just wanted to make sure that I could clarify those comments.
So yes, that's what I was looking for.
All right. Councilmember Klein.
I'd like first to put some things in context and go back to the history as I recall it. First, when we passed this in early 2010, virtually five years ago, I think, and I think the community felt, particularly the College Terrace neighborhood felt, this was a good deal. We haven't heard the same number of people tonight come out and say how much they really wanted to have J.J. and F because times have changed. But there were clearly a, I think, an overwhelming number of people in that neighborhood who thought this was a good trade-off for the city. And I think it's important to keep that in context, that yes, the developer got a significant amount of additional square feet in exchange for the BMR units that have been referred to and a grocery store. We've heard a number of people tonight say the grocery store can't succeed. These are members of the public who, as far as I know them, have no grocery expertise, and I certainly claim no grocery expertise. Can a grocery store work here? We have different opinions. Certainly, we've now heard that two experienced grocery store operators do think that they could make a success of that there. I refer to Mickey Wernas and the Querries. And I find it disappointing, at least, if not misleading, that those two parties were not mentioned before. In contrast, what we heard from the developer here was that there was nobody who was interested in this project, being, running the grocery store. And that's clearly not the case. Our standard in the PC ordinance is, just to use a shorthand, is the proposed operator comparable to J.J. and F as it existed in December of 2009. As one of our speakers tonight pointed out, there is nothing in there that talks about rent. That wasn't our concern, and that its absence is not an accident. So if the, just to pick some numbers out of the air here, if the applicant here feels that it needs to get $22,000 a month rent, and he could have gotten one of the other professional people, the two that have been mentioned, maybe there are others, I don't know, at $15,000 or $10,000 a month, then it seems to me that was his obligation to do so. There is nothing here that says that the city has to agree at the rent that the applicant wants to charge. A couple of people mentioned tonight that this has been going on too long, implying that somehow this is the city's fault. And frankly, that really raises the hackles on my neck. This project was approved in January 2010, nearly five years ago. If the applicant had been able to pull its financial act together or whatever else, it could have moved forward with, and gotten ground broken in 2010, and the project would have been up and operating for several years already. The city did nothing to prevent him from going forward in these last five years. So please don't talk about undue delay when it's really the operator's fault here, and maybe financial conditions, maybe they're extenuating the circumstances. That's not my problem as a city council member, nor any of my colleagues. The problem I have is our standard, I don't believe, is met here. And I will tell you why. I claim no expertise in groceries, unlike Vice Mayor Niss. I only was in J.J. and F a few times, and then, so I don't make any claims to know where any of the products were located or anything of that nature. But I feel I do have a lot of experience with a variety of businesses during my many years as a lawyer. And I think there's one thing in common with almost all, with all businesses, really, and that's good management, knowledgeable management. And when I look at that aspect of the application before us, I don't see it. What we have is the lessee is a person who may be a great businessman, I don't know, but he has zero experience in running the grocery business. And I compare that to the years and years and years of experience that the Garcias had, which is our standard as of December 2009. So we have, back in 2009, we had a lessee of great, great experience in this business. And now, the proposal is that we should say that somebody with no experience is the same. Frankly, Mr. Chavez is irrelevant to me, and I don't have any doubts as to his goodwill or his enthusiasm or anything of that nature. But he is not the lessee. He is the consultant or employee of the lessee. The lessee is James Smalley. And I look at the operating agreement, so I go to the documents. And I'm assuming for the moment, and maybe if I'm incorrect in this, that the operating agreement at page 690 in our book is the one that's operative. If it's not, please stand up and tell me that right now. Don't, not seeing anything. So let's say, the operating agreement says that James Smalley's company, J&amp;A Family Markets, et cetera, doing businesses, College Terrace, will do, will have an agreement with Uriel Chavez. And it goes on to describe what duties that Mr. Chavez will have, his compensation and so forth, pretty standard agreement. The key line here is, to me, talks about termination. Usual legalese, but it says, if this agreement is not sooner terminated or extended as the case may be, it shall expire and terminate as of the close of business on March 31, 2019. That seems like a long term, but it's really not. I'm assuming that even if you started construction tomorrow, that this building would not be up and operable until sometime in 2016. So it's less than a three-year agreement for operating a grocery store. And further, there's nothing to prevent Mr. Smalley from terminating this agreement. He might very well owe Mr. Chavez some damages, but he could terminate him. It's his business. So he terminates him. He has to pay Mr. Chavez maybe as much as whatever years are left on his employment contract, if you will. But since it's only two or three years, it's really not all that much. So I think that it's sort of a red herring when Mr. Chavez is asked to be the front man here. The real person who would be operating this grocery store is James Smalley. And I don't see where he is comparable to the Garcias in terms of managing a grocery store. Since it now appears that there are other people who are willing, maybe not on the terms that the ownership would like, it seems to me that what we should do tonight is to reject the proposal by the ownership, tell them to go back to the drawing board. I'm comfortable with granting them an extension, but having heard from the city attorney tonight, I'm not sure that we can really do that, whether that has to go to the planning commission first, or whether council could say no, but you have a three-month extension or some of the time period till February, March of next year. Anyway, that's where my thinking is at the present.
Councilmember Klein, if I can just interject, we did get communication over the weekend that should have been in your packet materials at places with regard to that Section 2C of the agreement and the expiration of the agreement. I haven't read it carefully. As I said, it came in over the weekend in a communication from...
This came from, I believe it was from Jim Bear.
I believe it came from Mr. Bear, but he could confirm that.
I'm sorry if I missed it.
It's the First Amendment to the agreement, the operating agreement between J&amp;A Markets and Uriel Chavez. It, let's see, the, it's Section 2C of the operating agreement shall be deleted in its entirety and replaced as follows. Expiration, if this agreement is not sooner terminated or extended as the case may be, it shall be co-terminus with the term of the company's commercial lease, i.e. the lease between College Terrace Center, LLC, a California limited liability company, as landlord, and the company as tenant, as amended and expire and terminate concurrently with the lease.
Councilmember Klein, have you made a motion here?
I didn't yet, but let me just comment on that. It really doesn't change anything to my thinking. For one, you have a relationship here between a father and a son, and they, not Mr. Chavez, the two Smalleys, obviously. So whether they arrange to have a termination that then triggers a termination here, I don't know. I'm sorry, I didn't see that what you referred to there. But still, the basic point is, and I remain with it, that Mr. Smalley can always terminate the services of Mr. Chavez, and it's just a question of how much he pays him to get out of it.
All right, so...
Are you looking for a motion? I would like to hear from the city attorney's office as to whether we have the right to grant an extension or not.
That's what I wanted to go to her on right now. So let's get clarification on how the extension works and whether or not we can physically get it done before the end of the year.
Yes. So I think there are two ways to extend this permit. One is to do it through the previously adopted extension ordinance. The second would be to do it just as an extension of the PC permit. And if you do it that way, it really hasn't been noticed for that. So I would suggest that we renotice that, and we can put it on a consent item next week for the extension.
Do we have time to notice it? Oh, it just needs to be noticed on our agenda. It does not have to be publicly noticed.
Exactly.
So we would need to renotice it for next week. Pardon?
Yeah, it will be publicly noticed as well.
Right. Yeah. But I mean, it's not like a public hearing. We don't have to put in the newspaper with that... the newspaper with, with that timing. So does that make a difference with what you're thinking of doing right now?
No, I have no idea where my colleagues are, but I will move that we reject the request of the applicant to approve the new tenant for the grocery store, and direct staff to notice a, an extension of the PC ordinance for our next meeting.
Second.
Okay, that's been, the motion's been made on this, and a second by Vice Mayor Niss. Do you want to speak any further on your...
No, I, I think I spoke to Mr. Berman as a question.
How long for the extension?
Do you want that in, in it or not? I deliberately didn't put it in.
After entry?
Okay, nine, March 31, 2015.
Vice Mayor Niss, you seconded this? Did you want to speak to this at all?
I did. I think, I think that this is a very reasonable way to move. We talked about this earlier as to whether or not it met the criteria that were included when all of you voted in 2009, 2010. It doesn't meet it for me in two ways, both from the discussion we've had tonight, but also because I have described my very real experience with J.J. and F, which was a unique experience, probably cannot be totally duplicated. But I think this is a grocer that... Pardon?
I'm just gonna make a comment to colleagues. I'm, I'm clearing the lights, so if you want to speak to this motion, please put your lights back on.
Where was I? So I think whomever thinks of taking over this grocery store should look at the needs of today's market, today's niche, as that exists. And I think it's different. I think now those who will be shopping at that market are going to be looking for different kinds of items, probably takeout foods. Maybe they should look at a different type of model than one existed before. In many ways, J.J. and F was a thing of the past. It was when my kids were growing up, when, it was, it was just a much more, kind of, almost in a way, a family place. I'm not sure you could duplicate that. But I think we can get an awful lot closer than what we have heard described tonight. So that's why I'm supporting the motion.
Before I go out to colleagues, I am going to do a 10 o'clock check-in. And it is 10 o'clock right now. And we have two more items, and we've had a lot of people sitting, waiting for the RPP. So it's my suggestion that we take up the RPP after this, because I don't want to be disrespectful to those that have waited. But this is going to be a long night. All right. Yes?
Even if we're, if we're willing to hang in there on the RPP, I'm not sure that we're, first, going to be able to complete that tonight, and, second, that making critical public policy decisions at midnight is a good practice, even if we're willing to gut it out. And so I would recommend that we consider continuing the RPP to, I think you were talking about having it after, following the finance committee?
Following finance committee tomorrow night at 8 o'clock.
Yeah. I, I don't think that, that trying to do this business at midnight is...
Or we can take this, we can continue, we can, we can continue this tomorrow night and take up RPP right now.
If we were to start RPP right now, we're still looking at midnight.
I agree. So...
Legal question. That's less than 24 hours. Does that have to be given notice?
No, this is a continuing. So, no, we don't have to. But, but we have not done any poll of colleagues to see if they're available for 8 o'clock tomorrow.
Why don't we do that now?
All right.
How could be available for 8:30?
All right. So 8:30, we will continue RPP, but, but I have a lot of public comments. So how about if we take public comment on the, on the RPP tonight?
Maybe we should take it again.
We can give them the opportunity to speak now and then. Right.
It's an or, please.
Okay.
Excuse me, I have a question. Could we start at 8?
Well, we just heard from people that they cannot start at 8.
Well, they come at 8:30, the rest of us be here at 8?
We could start with six members. With something.
I'd rather start at 8.
Yes.
Why are we sure that the finance committee meeting is going to be over at 8?
They have canceled one of the big items tomorrow night. They have canceled the animal shelter, the way I understand it.
They've canceled it.
You haven't canceled it, you've postponed it.
That is the biggest item, but the main recommendation is a continuance of it ultimately to April 15, when we get the auditor's report back. But there will be a need for some discussion.
But that gives us two and a half hours. I mean, the meeting's starting at 6. So I think two and a half hours should be plenty to handle what's on the agenda. And we'll, we'll keep in mind the fact that we have another meeting starting at 8:30.
I would strongly urge us to try and start it at 8. Otherwise, we are going to be here again tomorrow night until midnight.
Okay, we're gonna start at 8:30, because that way we will have all of our colleagues. And we're gonna move back into this item right now, and continue the RPP.
And then you remind the public that we'll take public comment on RPP.
And I do have eight speakers on item 13. And item 14, there are four of us that, three of us at least, that are, will not be able to hear item 14, because we're conflicted due to some impact that comes to us with, with taking it up with interests that we have in the area. So, but, but we do have eight speakers on item 13, which all of us can participate in. With that, I'm going to announce that we will continue RPP, but we will take up the public comment tonight on that. And we will go into, back to our current item right now, which is the market. And I have colleagues interested in speaking on this. And let's start with Councilmember Holman.
Yes. Thank you for this. So we're back on College Terrace Center, so. There are a lot of things. I appreciate the comments that have been made and questions that have been offered by colleagues. There's a lot about this that's troubling, not the least of which is not having the direct agreement with a grocery operator. When I was reading this, and I saw that Mr. Chavez is the grocery operations officer, I looked that up online, and I couldn't find any other example of that. No other example of that. I think, and I'm gonna be pretty blunt here, but I think, I think one of the things that has happened with this project going way back when, is there have been overstatements and overpromises made. And that just raises concern, raises suspicion, and look what's happened. The project, the applicant, the grocer, everybody has been maybe even over scrutinized, but look what's turned up, because there have been so many statements made. I look at, I'm not sure if Mr. Chavez is the right, the right grocer either. I was gratified to find out that two other grocers are actually interested in this. I appreciate Councilmember Klein's comments that, you know, the PC agreement doesn't state any kind of rent, no restriction, maximum, minimum, no floor. And if there are other grocers who could, who have a lot of experience and could make this successful, then, you know, it's actually cheaper, when you do the math, it's actually cheaper to offer even no rent to a grocer than it is to pay a $2,000 a day penalty for a non-grocery existence. So it seems to me the math even functions that way. I look at the experience of Mr. Chavez, and this is certainly not personal, I'm looking at it from the responsibility of council members to see that a public benefit can be delivered. Which, by the way, sadly, when I was on the planning commission, this came forward, and yes, there was a lot of community support for J.J. and F, but it's, as I said then, when I voted against the project, it's, it was emotion-driven, and it was not good planning. You never vote for, people talked tonight about how hard it is to deliver a use. It's very hard to deliver a use. It is impossible to guarantee or deliver a tenant. It, it was a bad basis for a project, always was, and now here we are, where we are. But I look at, this is one of the other things that makes me have concern about this potential non-operator, should-be-operator, is I look even at the products that are on page 642. And it may seem a small thing, but it's just in combination with so many other questions that come up about, you know, the qualifications and viability of a grocery consultant or operator. And if you look at, kind of a silly one, is under drinks, it lists Kool-Aid. I mean, it just seems like it's, it's very unsophisticated. But more than that, you look at the categories, and you look under dry goods, and probably fully half of those things listed are dry goods, or not even dry goods. And it just, it calls the whole thing into question about experience, and savvy, and know-how in the grocery business. I'm not a grocer, but I know what dry goods are. I think it's pretty common. But there are just all kinds of things that call into question what's, what's feasible and who's feasible. I have a question for the staff about the extension of the ordinance. The ordinance, the extension ordinance, and I should disclose, and I forgot about this earlier, I learned this, and I can't remember who I learned it from, but some member of the public, and it was probably Dorian, or I assume, or Jeff Lewinsky, because they're the only one I talked to, that the ordinance itself, the extension ordinance itself, was supposed to have been reviewed, to see whether it should be extended or not. And that hasn't happened. So does the council have the authority to extend the PC ordinance? In other words, is the extension ordinance actually legally in place for us to be able to utilize it to extend the PC ordinance? That's my question. Do we have a valid extension ordinance?
So I think that, that the suggestion to extend to March 31 is not through the extension ordinance, but just through the council's inherent ability to amend a PC ordinance.
I appreciate the clarification. And I think, I guess I do have one other question. Are there impending, so I'm gonna back up here for a second, which is, I was surprised to see the existing buildings demolished, because my understanding has been that demolition permits aren't granted until building permits are granted. So is there any other impending permit that we should be aware of that, you know, might cause us issue?
There is a pending application for grading and excavation that is ready to issue. And so what the council does tonight will determine whether that can be issued or not.
Okay, all right. I think that, I think that concludes my comments.
Councilmember Scharf.
So I agree with Councilmember Klein. I just want to offer some thoughts as to, as to a separate approach to this. One of my concerns is that we're not giving good direction to the, to the applicant here. We're basically telling him to go back to the drawing board and come back to us. And I don't really think that's fair. I also think we have a limited legal obligation to look at a particular phrase, which is, as several speakers, Mr. Baylen included, said, "If the grocery tenant is not a party other than John Garcia, shall be subject to the prior approval of the Palau to City Council, which should not be withheld unless the city reasonably finds that such proposed grocery tenant is not likely to be comparable in quality of products and services." And so what I was feeling, and I, what I heard Councilmember Klein saying in this, is that you need a direct operator. And I strongly feel that way. And I think that what we should really do is go ahead and approve the condition of approval of a tenant with a voluntary agreement to be executed by the city manager and the property owner, and that we should have a bunch of conditions in that. And so I'm gonna throw this out there. I want to see what people think about it. So I would suggest that the city council approves the grocery tenant, subject to the following conditions of approval, which shall be included in a voluntary agreement to be executed by the city manager and the property owner, before issuance of any grading, excavation, or building permit. Which basically means that if they don't meet these conditions, they cannot move forward. And the first condition would be that the owner-applicant shall modify its contractual arrangements so as to lease the grocery tenant space directly with an experienced grocery store owner-operator. And I would just leave it at that, on that. And then, basically, I would then say that the operator shall be subject to approval by the city manager and city attorney, prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the grocery store, and daily penalties of 2,000 in the event the approved market goes out of business, and is not replaced with another experienced grocery operator within six months. And I think I would also just add back up that James Smalley does not meet this, so that we don't come, they don't come back with anything that says James Smalley is the operator. I don't know how you'd feel about adding that in, Councilmember Klein. I realize it's almost like a substitute motion, but it really gets to the same place you get.
Well, I think it does. But my, my problems with it is that, I would agree with everything you've put in there, except for one item. I, I think this needs to come back to the council. There's a great deal of public concern about this, and I don't think it should be solely on the city manager's shoulders. I think that whatever has worked out. My problem with it, and I did think of the approach that you've, David, I think it might be good for you not to do that right now.
I'm listening.
That, I did think of the approach that you've taken, but it seems to me that I don't want to see us getting too closely involved in the, in the applicant's business. If he's got some other suggestions or thoughts, I think that he ought to be free to come forward with them. And I think that he'd be certainly wise to follow the ones that you, you've suggested, but maybe he's got something else in mind that might work. I don't know. But I think that, that we ought to, I think we've given him lots of direction. I think it's up to them to really, to come back with something that works.
Well, I do think that, I hear what you're saying. I actually would be fine with changing it to be that it comes back to the council on that. I just think without type direction like that, there's no record of that. There's other people coming to council. You know, a lot of different council members, frankly, have had made different comments, ranging from, I'm, you know, don't think we should have this kind of, to be a PC, that it's not a good trade anymore, to a good deal, to what is, what does J.J. and F really look like? If we don't have the quality of the services necessarily, and, you know, a hometown feel, do we necessarily have J.J. and F? And I think, I think that's a mistake. I think that, you know, we have some legal obligation here, and I think we have to have a record, a clear record that someone can come backward and look at and say, "This is what the council intended, and this is how you meet that criteria." And without a clear record, I think we could have some issues. So I think I'd like to offer it as a, as a motion then. Shall I repeat it?
I think, you, you can't mean that owner-applicant will directly operate, operate a grocery.
No, no, I, I will provide this to the clerk's office, and then see if I get a second.
Remove item number two and make it come back to council, instead of just leave it with the city manager. Okay. Why don't...
I'm gonna make the city council, it comes back.
Why don't you go down and work with the clerk on this? And I'll move on to others, and we can come back to you. Councilmember Burt, did you want to go now, or do you want to wait for the motion, the amendment?
Well, let me start off, and I may second it, but I haven't had any opportunity yet to ask a question or a comment. So first, a question for the city attorney. And I'll preface this by, by saying that one of the ambiguities that, and lack of clarity that the council's been having tonight is understanding, one, for instance, why Mr. Smalley's in this deal. He's providing the capital. It's clear that that's why Mr. Chavez is not the principal. Question we should ask ourselves, well, what if there was a proposal that came forward that was a combination of, of the financial entity and the operator, and they were in a shared equity position? Does that mean that everyone who is a partner in the deal has to have extensive grocery experience? And I think that may be what we're backing ourselves into a corner on, and I'm not sure that that's a necessity. So I think that's something for us to consider quickly, but, so my question for the city attorney is, what if we're skeptical... attorney is, what if we're skeptical about the financial viability of the leasing, to continue to operate this as an ongoing grocery business? This has been a lot of the concern expressed tonight. Do we have the discretion to be able to say, not only that they start off with comparable products and services perhaps, but we don't know if they're going to last a year? Do we have the discretion to turn down that proposal because we think that they will not, on an ongoing basis, be able to offer comparable products and services?
Thank you, Councilmember Burt. It really is the comparability, the quality of the products and services that is the touchstone of the council's consideration tonight. The daily penalty that's been proposed really speaks to the applicant's willingness to make a commitment to an ongoing operation. And I think that that may be the place for the council to focus if there are additional issues or comments or guidance you'd like to provide in that area.
So if we thought that whatever business proposal we had before us for the operator of the grocery store would, on day one, have comparable products and services, but we were skeptical about their long-term viability, you're saying we don't have discretion to turn down that option?
No, I didn't say that. I said the PC has two provisions in it, separate provisions. And, you know, I'm going to have Cara Silver focus on the two separate provisions, which speak separately to the inception and the ongoing.
So in addition to making that initial finding, there are some additional ongoing safeguards in the ordinance. The most relevant one says that, is condition B seven, which says that the grocery store space shall remain in continuous operation as a grocery store. Continuous shall be defined to include brief closure for ordinary business purposes. There's another provision that defines what type of grocery store is contemplated. So condition B two states that the grocery store shall be a neighborhood-serving grocery store that provides all the typical grocery store products and services of neighborhood-serving stores, such that it shall not become a convenience mart facility.
Got that. But, so when we say it shall continue to operate as that grocery store that you described, we have offered up a surety that if it does not continue to operate, they'll pay a penalty, but that doesn't guarantee that it will continue to operate. So then, my question is still unanswered, is does the council have, within its discretionary approval, the ability to include whether we believe that we've been presented with an operator who can reasonably be expected to meet that requirement of shall continue to operate that way?
If I can help out, Cara. Councilmember Burt, I think our view has been that that is within the city's purview. And that's really why we focused on this issue of surety, whether you think it's adequate or not. The idea was to get to that very question of whether we can be assured that the grocery will maintain itself with comparable service and quality. And we thought that a significant penalty would operate as a disincentive to let the space remain vacant.
So I agree that it operates as a disincentive. It doesn't, that alone doesn't answer my question of whether the council has discretion in its approval process of making a judgment as to whether the operator can in fact achieve these comparable products and services on an ongoing basis. Is that within our discretionary approval?
Yes, I, that's surely the intent of the entire, you know, process here.
All right. So I don't want to belabor it, but that had not been clearly answered. Okay. All right. So since Councilmember Scharf has this motion up here, if I may second it, but I'm willing to give the floor back to the maker.
Right. If you want to second it, then we can go ahead and have him speak to his motion. And this, let's clarify this. Is this a substitute motion then to Councilmember Klein?
That's correct.
Okay.
I would prefer he just adopt my motion, but I didn't hear that coming forward.
No, I think we're making the classic error of trying to write a whole new thing at now almost 10:30, and I don't see the need for it. And I worry that we're going, by being so specific, that we're going to leave some problems on the floor. And I would rather have the applicant and staff work them out. So I'm not going to be supporting the motion.
And yet, at the same time, if you made this an amendment to the motion, you could make this an either/or, either we get to do an extension next week, or some of this has been resolved and we can take it up again?
I'll just make it as a substitute motion.
All right. Substitute motion it is. And you have a second, Councilmember Burt?
I will second it even while I'm continuing to read the details.
Okay. Councilmember Scharf, would you like to speak to your?
You know, I don't know what it should be, by the mayor or the city manager. I don't know. We can ask them.
Councilmember Scharf, I'm going to go ahead and...
No, I'll speak to the motion quickly.
Look to you to speak to the motion.
I think it's really important from a, and if the city attorney has any issues with the motion, I would like to hear them. But I think it's really important to give clear direction to the applicant of what we're looking for, so that when they come back to us, they come back to us with something that either meets our test or doesn't meet our test. And if we don't tell them what we're looking for, I think we don't create the record that we need to in this process. I think there are legal obligations to narrowly view what the question at hand is. And I think that what this motion does is it allows the owner to come back and say, "Yes, I've met this," and to know what they need to do to get this done. And I did want to hear from the city attorney if there was any language in there that would not be appropriate or I should change.
Thank you. Through the chair, Councilmember Scharf, we would suggest that you incorporate the idea of extending the PC ordinance, which is set to expire at the end of this year, so that there is time, if the operator needs more than those few weeks, to get back to the council under number two there.
I'd be happy to do that.
And do you have a time sensitivity to this, yourself, Councilmember Scharf?
No, I don't.
So this can come back next year?
Well, I'm fine with, I actually thought the March date that Councilmember Klein suggested was fine. It was March 31st, if I recall. So I'd be fine to adopt that.
Honor before March 31st?
Yeah, simply to say four months, you don't need section four.
Right. Go ahead and suggest that.
If under three, if you just say, change within six months to within four months, you don't need the section four. Okay.
Yeah, I'm done.
All right. So...
Hang on. Can we just take a look at this for a second? You've got penalties in the same clause as within four months. Is that how you'd like to see this?
No, it's not if, that's not if it goes out of business.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's, that was a different, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Right.
Councilmember Burt, we will look at this again before we vote on it, but would you like to speak to this again?
Yeah, there's one clarification I'd like to ask Councilmember Scharf, and that is, the way this is written, it basically seems that it is mandating essentially an experienced chain. And the alternative would be to have language that would say, "An ownership team with experienced grocery operator experience."
That's fine. I agree, that's a better clarification. Because that's not what I meant.
All right. So where is that? Yeah, under one grocery tenant team with experienced grocery store, let's see, I'm sorry, I'm not getting...
So it's an experienced grocery store owner-operator team? I mean, experienced grocery store owner-operator, which can include a team?
A team.
With team, okay.
Okay. All right.
I don't think you need the or, you just can say team, owner-operator.
Well, yeah, why don't you clarify it with him? So I'll simply say that I do have real concerns that absent this substitute motion, we're not giving adequate direction to the developer of what we're seeking, and we could go around in circles again. And that doesn't benefit anyone. And I think that this actually captures the direction that we are all trying to head, what we hear from the community, what we essentially have heard from the council. And I do think we, as a council, need to abide by the language that's here. We're talking about comparable products and services. And we've heard things about wanting things virtually identical to JJNF, and then comments saying that, "Well, it's got to be contemporary and change with the times." Well, those are somewhat contradictory guidances. And I think we need to simply stick to what we're putting here. And if council members are comfortable with this guidance, then we should support it. And I think it has the best chance of coming to the outcome that both we and the community have been seeking.
Okay, I'm going to go on with the order that I have that people wanted to speak from the last time we did lights. Councilmember Price.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate my colleagues' comments, comments by the public. I have shifted in my thinking. Up until about 10, 15 minutes ago, I was supportive of the staff recommendation and what has been proposed for us for consideration. I think the issue of comparability, of course, is very challenging, difficult to define. We're in a situation where we're talking about merchandising, we're talking about grocery business, of which none of us here have direct experience, as far as I know. I may be wrong. But I feel that the substitute motion, by the way, that's never stopped us in the past from making comments on everything like this. But I will be supporting the substitute motion. I feel that with those additional elements that have been added, it does provide guidance, it does address some of the concerns, including the issues of the penalty, including the kind of management structure and what will have the best financial possibilities. And I think the key point here is we want a successful project. All elements which have been previously approved in the PC, I think, are very credible. And I look forward to having this project at that location. And I feel positive and hopeful that that will happen sooner rather than later, because if we have a property just sitting on El Camino, that's kind of in limbo for an extended period of time, that's not helping the community, it's not helping the applicant, it's not helping, you know, kind of grocery operations and opportunities within the city of Palo Alto. So I will be supporting the substitute motion, and I really appreciate all the comments we've received, all the emails, all the phone calls. Thank you.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Yeah, I'm going to vote against the substitute motion, in favor of the original motion. I think tonight we've heard lots of comments that there's serious issues with the proposal before us now, and we need to do something about that. I don't see, though, the council being the one who should micromanage what a successful grocery store is. Over the last half hour, 40 minutes, I've heard three names mentioned as possibilities. All three have had recent grocery stores closed on them. Heard talk about personalities. Gee, the Garcias knew people. Well, you can't start a new grocery store where the owner knows people, where the personality comes through, something that grows in a dialogue. So I'm not sure we should be telling you what to do, if there are legal alternatives, if there are other personalities out there, if there are other ways of establishing a grocery store with key leaders. Come back to us quickly and let us know. I do want to make one point, though. I think there was one striking thing that came through the discussion that I think is extremely important for the city. We actually got a monetary value on public benefits. Sitting there is a number, $2,000 a day is what the public was promised. And failing that public benefit, that would be the value of it. That comes to $720,000 a year. That's $7.50 per square foot per month. That's what prime space is going in downtown Palo Alto. And that's promised as a public benefit. If you don't have this store, that's what the public needs to make up for it. So I think that's a great step forward. And I don't want to lose that notion. The original motion said merely that it would be approved and come back by March 34th, 31st, presumably to the full council. Substitute motion says will be executed by the city manager and the property owner without coming back.
No, actually, it's supposed to come back. We changed that. It does say back number two.
Okay, but I think both one and two have, one certainly has a number of specific things that we're directing. And I don't think it is appropriate that we direct owner-operator, operator, approved by us, and I've heard names mentioned. So I like the original motion.
Councilmember Berman.
So I think Councilmember Schmidt makes some good points, but I come out on the opposite side on the final analysis. I think $2,000, oh, let me back up. I wasn't on the council in 2009, or early 2010, when this was approved, neither was Vice Mayor Niss. But my understanding from that, from, you know, that long conversation that the community had back then is that that neighborhood really wants a neighborhood grocer in their neighborhood that they feel will be a part of their community for decades to come, just like JJNF was for decades in the past. And that is the goal that I would like to see us achieve. Frankly, I think contractually, that's the goal that we have an obligation to at least consider, as opposed to finding an end around to reject the PC that was originally passed by that city council, NIO at that time. And so that's the goal that I would like to see happen at the end of the day. I think the applicant, through stating that they would pay up to, or not up to, a $2,000 a day penalty if that location were to stay vacant for a long duration of time, is a huge commitment on their part and a real statement that they want to see a grocery store be there for decades to come as well. And I think that also goes a long way towards proving the viability of a grocery store in that location. I think what you're hearing from our residents, and rightfully so, is a concern and distrust based on previous PCs that have not provided the public benefit that was promised to the community. And so there's a very heightened level of scrutiny in the community for these types of projects. And that's something that I, and I think all of my colleagues, take very seriously. I'll say I don't think the applicant did itself any favors in some of the elements of their proposal that were scrutinized by members of the public tonight that I haven't heard a lot of answers to. Whether it's copies of a cookbook that were, or pages of a cookbook that were copied Whether it's copies of a cookbook that were, or pages of a cookbook that were copied for certain elements of the grocery store plan, or, you know, questionable statements made about certain people's work history. I would encourage the applicant, when they do come back, and I hope they do come back and, you know, I think they will, to really scrub the things that they send to council. Because if you guys don't, our members of the public will. And every time that they find something in your application that you can't defend, it makes it so much harder for us to believe you and approve the project. I agree with Councilmember Schmidt that, you know, some colleagues talk about grocers as if they'd be great when those grocers have had adverse, you know, business ventures in Palo Alto recently. I don't know, Mickey, I don't know the grocer that Councilmember Klein talked about. But, you know, let's not, everybody needs to be evaluated with the same kind of criterion. I think the substitute motion does provide, I hope the substitute motion does provide some concrete direction to the applicant. Because, you know, we as a council and we as a community need certainty that a qualified grocer is going to be, you know, owning the grocery store and operating it for decades. I had, you know, a similar concern that Councilmember Klein did about the term that was in the operating agreement for Ariel Chavez. To find out that we got another email from the applicant this weekend, I hate it when that happens, because we get a lot of emails over the weekend from a lot of residents and we don't necessarily always get a chance to, we try, and I try. It makes it hard working also during the day on Monday. If you guys have information to us, if the applicant has information to us, get us that information early. I hate it when we get late information from applicants. I think it's difficult for us and I think it's a disservice to the public. I hope that we can resolve this issue. I think there's goodwill on everybody's side to do so. But you've heard from us what our concerns are today. And hopefully, we can get those resolved in the next couple of months and get this off the ground.
Councilmember Holman.
Yes, a couple of things. One is, it seems the motion would be improved, and I'll look to City Attorney Silver if you want to insert some language, but it seems to me that, it seems to me that after Councilmember Scharf moved second by Councilmember Burt, that we need to pick up the language from the proposed motion by staff. Because we do not reference or are not referencing in this motion why we're doing what we're doing, which is because what's being presented to us, we don't feel like would be likely to be comparable in quality of services and products as JJ&amp;F. And that language needs to be, that language needs to be picked up and put in here, and I would suggest it go in right after Councilmember Burt. Would City Attorney Silver care to comment?
Would suggest something such as the council finds that the current proposal does not meet the findings required by the PC ordinance because it does not provide long-term grocery business viability.
Is that what you suggest?
Yes.
I'd be fine to accept that, then.
And you'd like that inserted where?
I think after point number one.
Okay. And you'll provide that to the clerk? Okay. And then the other question, actually, for the maker of the motion, it seems like we're doing two different approvals here. So under substitute motion, it says, okay, approval of the grocery tenant is subject to the following conditions of approval. It seems like we're also getting an approval here by the city manager. It seems like that would come after. That language confuses me. It says, which shall be included in voluntary agreement to be executed by the city manager and the property owner before issuance of any grading, excavation, or building permit. But then it's later that it talks about the operator should be subject to approval by the city council, so it's confused to me.
So what this motion will do is provide some initial approval tonight, but with a very substantial condition, that the council needs to approve the newly formed owner-operator or owner-operator team. And then, either concurrently or after that, the, all of that needs to be codified in an agreement that's enforceable before any additional permits, including for grading, excavation, or building can be issued.
So it seems to me that would be clear, this is to me, it seems to be clear if we took out, so in that first section, there's this following conditions of approval, and then delete the portion after that.
Well, I think what's intended to, what's intended there is that there be an enforceable agreement
Right.
that is executed, which the city will draft that in a way that it's enforceable against the current owner and any successor owners to the property.
Well, let me just add to that. I know that it's, you know,
The order, the order seems
The order is beforehand, but still, the phrasing makes it clear that the following conditions of approval, which shall be included in a voluntary agreement to be executed by the city manager, presumes that those conditions of approval must be met in advance of being able to be included in this agreement, which will subsequently be executed prior to those things.
That clarifies it. Thank you for the additional reading of that. Thank you. And Ms. Silver, the incorporation work for you?
Should we simply add condition? Should we add, following my name, conditions of approval? We're not approving the tenant, we're approving the conditions, correct?
It's fine with me.
You don't want to say this. You're saying you're approving it.
That's what we just corrected.
I know, but you don't, you need to say you're rejecting it somewhere. I don't see that yet.
Councilmember Holman, are you still working on the motion? Councilmember Scharf, I see your light on. Are you
No, no.
working through it? So are we happy with the way the motion is reading right now? Councilmember Scharf, I mean, Burt, are we satisfied with the way the motion reads right now?
Yes, just for clarity purposes, it's a question whether the second sentence in section one should be earlier in this entire motion, so it's clear that we're, we are rejecting the current proposal and going forward with this.
Yes, I think it should.
So exactly where would that be put in? Maybe, maybe just make that second sentence a new one? And then follow the numbering? No. Well, maybe she's got it. Molly? The alternative was to put the rejection as a new one, to take that sentence out of where it was in the second sentence of, is it one? And make it a new one is the rejection. And then everything else follows.
Okay. If Councilmember Holman has finished with her comments, and I'm going to go ahead and make a few comments and then go over to Councilmember Klein. I just have a quick question here, too, first, actually. If this was able to get organized by the eighth, with your item number, which I'm not sure it is now, the owner-occupant shall modify the contractual agreements. And item number three, the operator shall be subject to approval by the city council, would we be prepared to approve it next week? You're asking it to go on consent calendar. Just the extension. But it will not be noticed next week if we do have a resolution and an entity possibly to present to council. So is that in interest?
I think it's up to the mayor and the city manager if they put an item back on, if they were to come tomorrow. Let's say that they came to an agreement with an owner-operator tomorrow, and they wanted to put it on the agenda. If you could fit it on the agenda, then
Well, we can't fit it on the agenda, but we will put it on the agenda and see if we can get to it. I just wanted to get clear about whether or not that is too fast for this council. Yes?
Mayor Shepard, that actually raises a question that I've been wanting to ask about the substitute motion. I think the attorney representing the applicant mentioned the possibility of some kind of joint venture between the current operator and the current tenant, and whether that would meet the requirements in the substitute motion. I think they and staff would be interested in hearing from the makers of the motion.
Right, that's what I was thinking, too. He's happy to put an LLC together if that's what we're interested in seeing. So if that's what we're interested in seeing, is that, would that be considered satisfactory?
Can I comment on both of those quickly?
Sure, Councilmember Burt.
First, I would say that a nominal equity position would not meet the intent of this motion. Second, with the mayor's question, if somehow there was a deal consummated that met these terms with the city manager giving his preliminary approval, and it was able to come forward at any subsequent council meeting after that has been, deal has been satisfactorily met, then it can be agendized.
All right.
But we don't have to, we're not precluding next week, but we're not anticipating it either.
Councilmember Scharf, do you want to comment on that?
I agree with Councilmember Burt.
Okay. I think the reason why I wanted to ask that is there probably is construction loan deadlines and such that could be very impactful for the owners. I agree with you. It's not a, it's not our concern here about that, nor do we have that information. But I just want to make sure that if we have an opportunity to address that on the eighth or the 19th, we would be willing to do it, and we have not spoken to that at all. And whether or not we find that this is, you know, how much of an equity partnership there is, we don't have a litmus test here either. So I, I'm, I do worry that we're in the same position again, that it's just not quite right the next time it comes around. And if there's anything that would maybe create that litmus test, I think this would be a good time to take a look at this one more time and see if there is an element there that could be added to the motion. I'm happy to support this motion, but I just do worry that we just defer the same conversation to next year, new council, et cetera. And if that's what is the attempt right now, is to try to shape this PC approval process a little more quickly, I think we still will end up with some of that trouble.
Mayor Shepard?
Yes.
The applicant's representative would like to ask a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you very much. To respond to Councilmember Burt's suggestion that a nominal equity position would not be adequate, the ownership of the current less E J&amp;A Family Markets would agree to enter into a 51-49% split with Mr. Chavez having a 49% split of equity ownership. My question is, is that satisfactory? We could have the entity prepared tomorrow, the documents prepared tomorrow, to the city manager tomorrow, if that is responsive to what we are being told under the substitute motion.
I would just, it's not in the motion. I'll offer my notion, which is that, yes, that would be substantive. But we've deferred this to the city manager and we're giving some degree of guidance.
I would agree with Councilmember Burt.
Yes, I'm going to, I forgot that Vice Mayor Niss was before you on this one, so, Vice Mayor Niss. Okay, she wants, like you to go first. Councilmember Klein.
I didn't mean to go ahead of Vice Mayor Niss. I'm quite clear. Please go ahead.
So, so let me speak to the substitute motion that's in front of us, which, you know, certainly looks tempting, but I think it's incredibly prescriptive. I think the one aspect of this that, you know, I would support, and it's what Greg Schmidt mentioned, is $2,000 a day finally gets us to a real number that we could use in dealing with PCs. But as I look at this, I, and again, I wasn't here for the first PC. It looks as though a great deal of this language would have been in that first PC. Am I wrong? You're nodding. So I think a lot of it already was in that PC. And I think the value in this is to say why, or why not, we're rejecting this. But then we've gone on to, again, elucidate exactly what you have to do, which I have to somehow think was in the PC before. None of this was in the PC? Really? It's not in front of me.
It's right here.
But I am just, I am puzzled that we have become this prescriptive. And so I'm going back to the, to the former motion, although it sounds as though this one will pass.
Councilmember Klein.
Well, with all due respect, colleagues, this is why our meetings last too long. We've now spent almost 45 minutes trying to craft some language that gets, I think, worse rather than better as we go along. Not a good use of council time. That we might be more specific than my original motion, maybe, but I don't think that we've gained anything whatsoever. I think Vice Baron Niss is correct. A lot of what's in this motion is what we were legally required to do under the PC ordinance in any event. I think that the second line of this motion is deeply misleading. Approval of the following conditions. No, our first act is that we are disapproving of the proposal of what brought by the applicant. And I think Councilmember Holman was correct in bringing it up, and the proposed solution, I think, doesn't get there. You don't put your main action down as a subordinate sentence in the, what, the second paragraph. I think that we're just twirling around here, really accomplishing nothing and really getting ourselves into trouble, as was shown in the dialogue there when the attorney for the applicant brings up a 51-49 split, and then immediately everybody starts scratching their heads, well, is that good enough? That isn't what we should be doing at 11 o'clock at night. Keep it simple. Give an assignment to staff, give an assignment to the applicant. The applicant is the one who has the burden here of going forward, of presenting something to us. We shouldn't be trying to dot every i and cross every t for him. Let them come forward. And let's not get bogged down in details. The only one that I can think that we might really add appropriately is the one that Councilmember Schmidt brought up in saying that anything that the applicant brings back should include penalties of the $2,000 per day. I think that would be a good addition. But the rest, I think, is either already in the ordinance, or is unnecessary, or is getting us bogged down. And one last suggestion, Madam Mayor, I think that you should treat this as an amendment rather than a substitute motion, because I think the council is actually nine-zero in support of the general idea, and having us come out with a split vote is very misleading. And I think that's within your discretion to call this an amendment rather than a substitute motion.
You're saying that that would be an amendment to your motion, which is already item number five, which is asking for the extension on the substitute motion?
My motion is right above it. This would just add lots of language to it.
So make it, so you're saying that it's fine to make this an amendment to the original motion? So why don't we go ahead and retitle this? To me, it looks redundant. And if we're ready to vote, I would really like to vote on the amendment to the motion at this point, as it reads on the board right now. So if we can go ahead and vote. And this motion does carry with Councilmember Klein and Councilmember Schmidt voting no. So now we, the amendment is now added to the motion. And I do find it strange that we have it two times where we are putting it on consent calendar to ask for the extension. Is that? Okay. All right, it's repetitive, but right now, this is fine. Okay, in that case, let's go ahead and vote on the main motion. Okay, in that case, let's go ahead and vote on the main motion. And as amended, thank you.
Greg, you don't want to vote?
And Greg, please vote. Okay, and the motion carries unanimously 9-0. With that, this item is now over. And we have, as promised, we will be continuing our meeting for the item number 13 and 14 tomorrow evening, and yet we are happy to hear the public comment tonight on item 13 for those that have stayed.
Madam Mayor?
And I would like to welcome, yes.
My understanding is there are at least 20 cards for both of these items, 13 and 14?
There's 15 cards for item 13, and on item 14, not all of us can hear it.
Right.
So I was only going to hear for item 13 tonight.
And not on the other. Okay. So that would be 45 minutes if it were three. Is there-
I don't know how many people have stayed around in order to do this.
Would you be thinking of still entertaining the closed sessions following this?
Yes, we have to take up the closed sessions. Yet, at the same time, for those of you that are not here, we can find out who is here. Also, if you speak tonight, is it okay if they speak tomorrow night as well?
If you speak tonight, you do not speak tomorrow.
So tonight, you speak, and tomorrow night, we will have to keep track of who did speak tonight, and that will not be allowed for speaking. We are going to go ahead and take public comment without an introduction to this item.
And obviously, the opposite is true. If you don't speak tonight, you can speak tomorrow night.
Exactly. So if you don't speak tonight, you can speak tomorrow night. And I'm sorry for how confusing this is, but for those of you that are here, I'm going to go through them in the order that I've been receiving them from those city clerks.
Just a minute to clear the chambers.
And so-
Just ask if they move on.
Yeah, and those that are not staying for RPP, if you could quietly move out to the lobby so that we can take up the RPP quickly. And so, item number 13, you will have three minutes to speak, and our first speaker is Samina Fahim, to be followed by Tommy Derrick.
Good evening again. I really commend all of you to be so patient with everybody. You are all doing a good job. So I live on 120 Park Avenue, and I share the fence where old Foster Freeze used to be. Now there are two giant, giant, giant offices there, and then there are two apartments on top of each building. I don't think there is any more than 15, 10 to 15 parking slots, and they have more staff members, and then they have patients, and then they have visitors and all that. I like that we don't have garages in front of our house, so when we come out, we can actually see people. Don't push a button and go out, and then push a button and go in, and no contact with the neighbors. So therefore, it has been really hard for the last few years that, you know, parking close to my house or in front of my house, especially when I have groceries and all that, really, really, very difficult. And I would like to be continuously a good neighbor to them. So therefore, I'm requesting if you could please give us residential permits so we can at least have one or two spots in front of our houses. Thank you.
Thank you. Tommy Derrick, to be followed by Frank Slattery.
I'll defer to tomorrow night.
Frank Slattery, to, excuse me, I'm sorry, to be followed by Norman Beamer. And I don't see Frank or Norman, Norm Beamer. I don't see Norm.
Are you on 13, 14, or just 13?
Just 13. All right, Brandon Corey, you'd like to speak tonight?
It's been a long night.
Yes, it's been a long night.
It's been a long night, yeah. So this is also for the, for the, for the combination, I guess, 13 and 14.
No, we only take up, we take up the items individually. So this is for item number 13, which is the framework for the residential parking permit program. And we do not have the staff presentation, so you can speak tomorrow night if you can attend tomorrow night, or you can speak this evening if you're prepared.
I was thinking more for the 14, so I guess I should wait and then speak tomorrow night.
Okay, I have you down for item number 13 here. So did you want me to change this to 14?
Yeah, I thought I had 13 slash 14.
Right.
I was unclear on the-
Okay, we chose wrong. All right. Russ Cohen, to be followed by Judy Kleinberg.
Russ Cohen, Executive Director of the Palo Alto Downtown Business and Professional Association. Honorable Mayor Shepherd, honorable councilmembers, thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. Tomorrow is my 20th wedding anniversary, so it's highly unlikely that I will be in attendance at tomorrow's meeting. First, let me make clear that the business community wants RPP to succeed. Let me also make it clear our gratitude to Jessica Sullivan for all of her hard work. However, the purpose of Phase One is to gather quote-unquote "good" data. There are three concerns that are mission critical. The success of the program depends on these concerns being addressed. A, either fees should be charged to both the downtown worker group of users and the residential group of users, or no fee should be charged to either group. Robust participation by both groups is essential for the success of the data gathering objective of Phase One. Charging one group and not the other will simply limit participation and prevent the city from gathering the quote-unquote "good" data that it so desperately is seeking. B, the current program calls for maximum allocation of permits for downtown workers in Phase One. This, too, will limit participation and skew the data to be gathered. First, gather the data. Allocation is quite appropriate to be administered during Phase Two, not during Phase One. C, downtown businesses have worked closely with city staff to develop tactics that address downtown parking. These tactics include, but are not limited to, technology upgrades, TMA formation, expanded shuttle services, tandem parking, and more. These should be implemented and their results measured first in order to document the impact and how they address the issue. Why implement an RPP program when we have not identified where the downtown workers will park the very day RPP begins? RPP should be implemented as the last program in a host of programs, certainly not the first. RPP addresses the demand and simply ignores the need to address the supply. With that, I want to say thank you very much for seriously considering these mission-critical concerns. Thank you.
Okay, I would like to note that that was item 14 that you were speaking to and not the framework. And Judy, I know you were here for item 14 as well. So what I'm interested in is, if colleagues do want to take item 14 up tonight, those of us that are not allowed to participate can leave.
Yeah, let's, I mean, this is-
So let's go ahead and take up, now, Judy, are you here for, I know it's confusing. I'm very sorry.
No, no, I'm not confused. I'm just tired.
The framework, I know. The framework is for item 13 and the downtown RPP. So are you here to speak to framework?
I got it. I signed up for both, and what I'll do is I'll combine my comments and come back tomorrow night. How about that?
There you go.
And one of, and by the way, well, you know who I am, but Peter Stone, who is on our Board of Directors and sat through this whole evening waiting to speak to you, cannot come back tomorrow night, so you'll have to take him off the list.
He can talk tonight.
Yeah. Right. Item 13, he wants to speak, he can speak.
14.
14. I think we're going to hear that also, so let's go ahead and go through our conflict on 14 and those of us that have to step out, but let's do 13 right now and be done with 13. I'm so sorry.
I'll speak to 14. I'll make, I'll push you along a little further.
Pardon? I understand that, Pat. The reason, okay, why don't we go through item 13, which is the framework, and get the public comment out of the way on that, and then we can go through our announcements as to why we will not be partis, some of us will not participate with item 14. So Peter Stone, this is for the framework, so if you're interested in speaking to the framework.
Are you interested in item 14?
So item 14 is what you're interested in. Okay. And Maria Walk? Okay, would you like to speak to the framework?
Um, since I have something written up, I just wanted to, you know, to anyone.
Why don't you go ahead and give it to the city clerk? Yeah, and they can hand that out?
Item 14.
Thank you. This is item 14 as well. Okay. I'm sorry, but people signed up for both on the same card, and they really do need to be separated with the clerk. If you can do, each agenda item is a separate item. And Jeff Trom, you have listed RPP if you're here?
Yes.
Okay, I'll put him for tomorrow night. And Thomas Layton has written RPP. Also, clerks, if you wouldn't mind putting the agenda item on here so that I can identify whether this is item for the framework or for the residential parking permit program for downtown. I'll take that up tomorrow night. Harris Barton has the same item where it says RPP.
He's here, doesn't want to speak to 14.
Do you want to speak to the framework or for the item 14, which is the downtown parking permit program?
Should we all speak to the framework?
Framework, thank you. So this is item 13. And thank you for being patient with us.
Thank you for, thank you for listening. So I've lived here in Palo Alto for over 25 years, first starting down south, then moving into Crescent Park, and then buying a home, and that many of you have been to over here on Lincoln. I live now at Lincoln Avenue, 334 Lincoln Avenue, myself and my wife and our four children. We're very proud of this community, but over the last two, three years, the quality of life in our neighborhood has severely diminished, as it has in many of the other neighborhoods surrounding downtown. The spread of parking, the amount of cars that come in, really, really dictates that the city council take up the framework for this RPP program. Many of us have great concerns about us. Many of us have stayed here, listening to grocery arguments for four hours, waiting to express our concern, and I won't be able to be here tomorrow night. We need to ensure that there is a charge to the businesses that take up the parking spots in our neighborhood. Many times, you walk out of your house at 10 o'clock in the morning, and somebody is getting out of their car, parked in front of your house, getting on a bike, and riding the Palantir or Facebook when it was, when it was in downtown, which is dramatically unfair. Those businesses should be paying for this, for this proposal. Again, this is a community that we all love, and it's a community that needs to do something to ensure the quality of life that we all really want to have. So thank you very much for listening. I'm not sure whether or not I addressed the framework, but I'm happy that in fact I listened. Thank you.
Thank you. Gab Layton, if you're here, you're 14. Thank you. And Elaine Wong, did she, there you are. She's on 13, I have you for item 13, which is the framework.
So in January, one of the main priorities you set was for the built environment, mobility, parking. And I'm thanking you for your leadership on this issue. And it's good to hear that we're here 10, 11 months later, seeing an ordinance and a resolution later. I do, I'll speak generally to the framework because I don't think I can come tomorrow night, but I'd like to just sort of connect a few dots and put in your head some of the higher-level things that are at stake. With the framework, you're setting us up for some really good programs down the line as well. And I think that this is really critical to the consideration for both the ordinance and the resolution, but the ordinance specifically. RPP is going to be the foundation for reducing demand for parking and for traffic. This has probably been said quite a bit, but I do want to reiterate it. You approved a transportation management association, some transportation demand management programs comprehensively for the city, and without RPP, all of that will be useless. Free parking only encourages more driving. It only encourage, invites more traffic. It only enables more greenhouse gases, and it's the ultimate deterrent to any sort of alternative transportation mode. This is the problem, at least in several areas, and I'm not going to speak specifically, this is the problem that we need to address and that RPP can play a major role in. I've mentioned the TMA and the TDM. Those are our biggest hopes for really reducing the demand. We can't build our way out of this. Fundamentally, that's what we have to do. We have to reduce demand. TDM will be lipstick on a pig. Valet parking, garage technologies, all of these things will be ineffective tools until we get at the core, and that's reducing the demand. I'm going to commend Jessica for her valiant efforts in all of this. She has done the impossible, you will hear later, tonight, and we can't let perfection get in the way of the good. We need to move forward on this. We need to move forward now. You have a really fantastic opportunity to do this. For too many years, we've gotten the incentives wrong. You can take the right step forward and move us in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last speaker I have for item 13 is Iqbal Sarang, if you are here, and wish to speak to the framework on the residential parking permit.
Good evening, councilmembers. Thank you. I will not be able to be here tomorrow, so this is appreciated. Regarding to the framework, I am hoping that there will be consideration given to apartment owners equally, specifically because there are a great number of historic buildings that have apartments in them without parking structures, and this is something I would like the council members to be cognizant of and provide for that, wherever they may be located. That is my, my primary comment, to emphasize that I live in an apartment building with more than 100 tenants, and some of them are couples, and therefore, the likelihood of, of a whole number of cars being utilized is very high. And I hope you give that consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, those are the speakers for item 13, and I'm going to turn the meeting over to the vice mayor to run the public comments for item 14. My husband does have a lease in the downtown district, which means that I might have a financial gain or loss on the decision, and so I will not be participating on item 14, which is the actual residential parking permit program for the downtown and Professoreville neighborhoods. And I think, colleagues, Councilmember Berman?
So I'm going to recuse myself from this item as well. I own and reside in a condo at 640 Forest Avenue in the downtown area that would be impacted by the downtown RPP, and so would have a financial gain or loss in this item, and therefore will not participate.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes, my property on Homer Avenue is on the other side of Middlefield. Nevertheless, it could be impacted by spillover results from any kind of actions that are taken in the downtown area, so I will be recusing myself.
And Councilmember Scharf?
I also am going to recuse myself, even though I don't believe I have a conflict. I own a commercial property at 616 University Avenue. The standards for recusal on a commercial property are different than a residential property. When I look at the ordinance and I understand, as the city attorney has explained it to me, I don't believe I have a conflict, but it's very tough to apply. And so, without having the time to go through it and actually make the determination, which I can't do, given the information I currently have, I am going to recuse myself. But the reason I lay this out there is there may be a time in the future where I don't recuse myself, and that have to, I feel like it's important to explain it now that I actually may change my mind on this. And the city attorney has not advised me that I have a conflict. She advised me that I need to look carefully at, and apply the ordinance.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
If I might also speak as city manager, obviously, I don't vote, but I am required to abide by these regulations also. And as I own a house on Webster Street within the downtown parking district, I will have to recuse myself from this meeting when the-
the downtown parking district, I will have to recuse myself from this meeting when this item comes up.
All right, and those of us will join, the rest of you will join us in closed session after this is concluded with the public comment, and we will take up council member questions, comments, and announcements tomorrow evening. So just for clarity, those who have left have the possibility, as they have mentioned, of some economic gain or a loss because they live in within a certain number of feet of the downtown and the area we're discussing tonight. So the reason you're only seeing five of us right now, we're the only ones who can vote on this, and we are addressing Number 14. Number 13 has already been addressed. So if you are still here, I'm going to call you one at a time, but I still have Simon Sins, I have, I, I hope the last name is Layson on that one, Maria Kwak, Peter Stone, Brandon Corey, Benjamin, I think CIA, CIA T Z, Michelle or Michael Hodes, Richard Brand, I know you're still here, I saw you before, and Judy Kleinberg I know has already left. I remember that she left. Are you still here, Judy?
Yeah. She moved, she's in the front row.
Oh, you're Number 14, okay. So, so let me start. If you're all here, would you just come somewhat closer so we can go through these relatively quickly? On Simon Sins, are you still here?
He's gone.
He's gone. It looks like Gab Layst, am I even close, is that you?
Yeah.
Yes, please. This is on Number 14.
Gab Layton, 365 Lincoln.
Thank you. Thanks for directing me.
First of all, I want to say that I'm going to suggest that attending city council meetings should be entered as a new endurance sport and, like, extreme sport, to be honest. I think half of the people that turned up to speak on, for our neighborhood area.
Our apologies.
Unfortunately had to leave.
Yeah, our, our apologies. It's been a, a long night.
Right. So I just want to say that inadvertently Palo Alto, or perhaps not inadvertently, perhaps intentionally, has created a perverse system of incentives that have actually encouraged traffic and parking in the city of Palo Alto. And we've heard a lot about the neighborhoods that have been impacted that are close to the core. But I think the other thing that people don't realize is that every other month, another street face is basically being devoured by the parking monster. And I was going to be here tonight to say how excited I was that we're going to take this position and potentially adopt a strategy for dealing with the parking and traffic in the neighborhood. I guess I'll be excited tomorrow night when hopefully it passes, but I think the big thing for me is that RPP is the parking equivalent of the 10-cent paperback. I feel that a quarter a day, which is what we're basically talking about charging the employees to park in the neighborhood, is a small price to pay, but it would create such a different set of incentives, and I think it would change the entire city experience, not just for the residents, but also for the customers and thereby also for the businesses. So tomorrow night, I, I wish you well and I, I hope it passes. And thanks very much to Jessica because she has done a sterling effort on this.
Good. Thank you for coming. Maria Kwak, not here. Peter Stone. We should congratulate each one of you for lasting until well after 11:00. Greetings.
Unfortunately, I won't be able to be here for the moment of truth tomorrow, although I think it's, it's pretty clear to me how it's going to come out because I don't think there's really any, any stakeholder group that is opposing the Phase One, at least of the, of this RPP program. I've experienced the parking issues from, from both sides. I used to, for several years, reside at, on Addison, across the street from the garage, so I certainly had that experience of walking out of my house every weekday and seeing the entire street parked up. I also spent a year working on University Avenue in a building that had no parking, and I waited on a waiting list for the entire year to get a spot in Webster Cal, Calper Garage and couldn't get one, so I did what many downtown workers did, which is I split my time between the three hours I could park in this parking structure and driving out to, I think my favorite block was Byron. Sometimes I'd get lucky and ride off Litten, but usually I'd have to go past Everett, but I really had no, no other option. So I think that the, the situation is, is very hard on both sets of those stakeholders as well as the other stakeholders involved, the merchants, the, the employers of those office workers. We've all welcomed economic vitality and development, and yet it affects everybody at the same time in ways that aren't necessarily desirable. And all I can say in terms of supporting Phase One is that if we don't do anything, it's only going to get worse and be harder on everybody. I think the RPP is, is a step in the direction of active management of the situations, a step we need to take, but I, the biggest value that I see in, in Phase One is the data that it's going to generate, which hopefully will help us make better policy decisions in the future. I hope that we don't get too locked in right now on the proposed details of Phase Two because what we learned in Phase One may, may change the shape of Phase Two. I fully expect Phase Two will also be a trial, not a permanent solution.
Don't, don't.
The other thing that I want to agree with, I think the, in different forms, what most of the other speakers have to say about the fact that RPP is only one element of a long-term solution. There are many other elements. I am concerned, speaking on behalf here as a member of the Board of the Chamber of Commerce, on the effect of, on the downtown businesses, if we adopt an RPP without, longer term, without providing alternatives, both from the supply side as well as from the demand side, that will prevent a disruption of the, of the, major disruption of the labor force coming into downtown. Currently, if they have no place to park, I, I guess they'll seek employment in other communities, I really don't know, but from an employer point of view, it could become quite difficult, so.
Thank, thank you.
Sorry.
Yes, we forgot to time that, and you're over your three minutes, so I let you finish.
So anyway, thank you for, for listening.
Good. Thank you. Is Brandon Corey here?
Hi, Brandon Corey, I'm also on the 300 block of Lincoln. So this is.
And you're on Number 14, right?
I am on 14, yes. There's been a long process here. Thanks for everybody who's sticking in. There've been, I think, a couple of years of meetings back and forth about this. So overall, in general, the problem is clearly getting worse over time, and, and I'm glad that we actually have a proposal that's, that's going to be going forward tonight. I do have one concern, whether or not this will just keep extending out to further neighborhoods and, you know, this will solve the problem for our neighborhood, but we may need to keep amending it in the future, and that's something I guess the city's going to have to deal with, and that whole framework is a part of that. I do have a couple of concerns about, about the, about the specifics of the proposal, which are, one is, I feel like the, the fact that we're giving the first permit out for free for residents, I guess part of this will be the whole Phase One discussion of how this works. You know, we have, we have a large family and, you know, I kind of think it's, it's strange that we're subsidizing people who have that first permit for free, so personally I'd rather have every permit, have residents pay for every permit rather than get one for free because I think that's more fair. You'd probably have a lower price overall. My other concern is I actually do have five cars, and while I don't park them all on the street at once, I think it's, the, the fact that we have a limit of four seems kind of arbitrary, and I'm concerned that the way it's set up by having that limit of four, one is people like me who are probably in the minority don't have an ability to get a fifth car on the process, and we'll have to swap cars depending on which one we take for the day. And my other concern is that the people who only have one car don't buy four permits and sell three of those to people who are then going to ride on the Caltrans or work downtown, and there's no, there's no clarity in the proposal how that's going to work. So I think that could maybe be addressed by saying if you actually, you know, live here and you, and you, and you own, own a car and you have, you know, you have DMV, whatever proof you need, you can get that many, that many registered, which would kind of solve both the problems. You wouldn't get the overflow of the people who abuse the system and sell it, and you'd, you'd make that work for people like me. And the other cons, the last concern I have is, since this is, we're going to be renting out this or leasing out this project to third parties, what's the long-term cost? Do we, could we potentially end up with a situation where permits cost $500 in a couple of years, or is there any, where, where will those, you know, costs go? Because clearly if we're subsidizing, or if we're going out to another party to do this, their costs are going to increase. So what's the long-term kind of goal and what will we need to do to make sure those costs are contained over time? Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Benjamin Sins?
Yes.
Michael Hodes?
Yes.
Richard Brand?
Judy Kleinberg.
Judy Kleinberg I know is here. And Ruth Lowry is after Judy Kleinberg.
Hi, my name is Judy Kleinberg, and I'm the President and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce. I'm speaking on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce. Glad to see nothing's really changed since I used to be on the other side in terms of staying all night. In general, the business community really does support Phase One, the data gathering objective of Phases One, and we support the priorities of, of balanced approach between providing relief for the congested neighborhoods as well as fixing what's wrong with the current permit system. Obviously, we need a balanced approach and a focus on employee needs along with the needs of the residents, and we want to emphasize that any program has to meet the needs of all employees who make the downtown the vital, robust center that we all enjoy. That means really protecting the, the system in terms of downtown retail, employees, service workers, restaurants, and hospitality businesses. Also want to emphasize support for the transferability that's in the framework and that is also in the ordinance. There have been issues pointed out about possessing them for a long time and not really being allowed to move those, those permits around, but we do think that some kind of transferability system ought to be added in. But we do have two major concerns. One is that Phase Two seems to be too detailed at this point. We think Phase One should be Phase One, a pilot, and what comes out of that and the data and the experience, both in the business community and in the residents, should inform Phase Two. We are concerned at the, at the details that have been put into Phase Two in advance of knowing what's going to come out. Secondly, we think that the RPP, I'm going to repeat what you've heard from all sectors, from the business community and from residents, that the RPP really is only one piece of this huge puzzle. It isn't the arc that's going to save us from the flood. It really needs to be seen as only one little thing in making the, a comprehensive solution for this problem, a multi-transit approach with Caltrain, VTA, the shuttle, Stanford, all of that that you know. I just want to finish by saying that the business community is ready, willing, eagerly enthusiastic about being a partner in solving this problem. Many, many, many of the employees in this, these businesses and the business owners live here and have the same opinions about the problems and the solutions. So we're all in this together, and we hope that we can all come together in that spirit to solve it. Thank you.
Thank you, former Mayor Kleinberg. And Ruth Low, is it Lowey?
Lowey.
Lowey? Welcome.
Good evening, reduced council. I am delighted that the first steps are being taken. I'm also glad to hear that there is cooperation, intended cooperation, from the various aspects of our community, so that's great. And part of the problem needs to be addressed now because it will creep into other places. I live in South Palo Alto, and we have small problems, not nearly as impacted as north and south downtown, but every place you go, it's, it's there and it spreads a little bit. And I think underlying a lot of the problems are, we must make sure, you must make sure, that projects are properly parked when buildings are built. And so I, I hope everybody will keep that in mind as well. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. That's our last speaker for tonight. As was announced earlier, tomorrow night we'll deal with Numbers 13 and 14. Those of you who spoke tonight, thank you for speaking, and those of you who were not here and might be watching or listening, we will hear anyone who puts a card in tomorrow night, but we will not hear the same speakers again. So essentially, I'm looking at the city attorney, we are continuing, so we are going into closed session, we are continuing this very same meeting tomorrow night. My understanding is the start time is 8:30 following the Finance Committee meeting, which will be at seven, at six. And I think Finance is actually in here.
I think that's correct.
Right.
This meeting will continue in this room. And Vice Mayor Niss, what we will need to do is after we return from the closed session, we will need to take a vote to formally adjourn tonight's meeting to eight o'clock tomorrow in this room.
So if anyone's still around, we will be back after a bit.
Yes, appreciate you announcing to the public that that's the council's intention.
Okay. Thank you all very much for being here tonight. I know it's been an incredibly long night, and we appreciate your staying.